Commission meeting of June 5th, 2019. Sherry, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colossi?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioners Corbin?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
Commissioner Powers is absent.
I understand Commissioner Powers is ill. We wish him our best. All right, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Corbin, would you lead us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on our agenda is public communications. Item, item one? Public communications, members of the public wishing to address the planning commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker's card, like this little green one here. Find him in the lobby. File it with the secretary. Should state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes or less. Comments must be addressed to the commission, not the audience, not the city staff. While the planning commission is in session, all in attendance are expected to maintain order and decorum and to obey the orders of the chair. So we're going to public communications, the time set aside, for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I have one card, two cards for public communications. I'll call, call folks up in the order in which we receive the cards. First Claude Mann. Please come up.
Thank you. My name's Claude Mann and I'm a 25-year resident of the Valley. I recently opened a restaurant and prior to, prior to building out the restaurant, I heard a lot from people in the community that say, "Oh goodness, you're gonna have to deal with the city of Ojai." And it was, it was almost predictable that I'd hear that from people. But really, by and large, I've found that everyone I've worked with, with the city, has been professional, responsive, informed. I've enjoyed my interactions with the city and I, I feel as though we've been, we've been partners, because it's not easy opening a restaurant. And the partnership with the city has allowed us to get as far as we've gotten. We've opened up, I think, a really beautiful place that the people that live here in Ojai can afford and can enjoy, and I'm very, very happy about that. Things took a bit of a turn recently. I was given notice that we needed to take down our lights. And we, we do have outdoor lights. When we first took over the property, there were some incandescent bulbs and we replaced those with LEDs that had a Kelvin rating that were warm and that we could also turn way down if we needed to. So we do have the lights up. I was told probably, or not probably, I was told definitely, take them down, apply for a permit. Potentially, you can put them up at another time. And the way that that will impact us at our restaurant is that I don't even know that we can operate without lights. I don't think it's safe when you've got an old patio with uneven ground surfaces to have, let's say we've got the music festival coming up, we've got a lot of people, I think that the median age of the music festival is way past 65. So we're gonna have older people trying to negotiate this uneven ground and I'm told to turn off the lights. And I do wanna be a good partner with the city. I wanna do what I need to do to mitigate this or to become compliant. When I first heard about the dark sky ordinance, I did all the reading I could about it and I, initially I found this fabulous informational pamphlet that the county actually has. And they talk about different times of day, that at 10 o'clock, lights are out, and the reason why you're going to do this, why we need to do this, why it's important, and I actually agree with most of this. We're voluntarily, completely mitigating all single-use plastic. We're, we're trying to do our best to do what we can for the environment, because just having a business impacts the environment. But I would love to stay in business and I don't think I can without lights at night. So I would ask that, there are other businesses as well that are impacted by this, but give us an opportunity to work with you. We've already said, well, by shades, we know this whole, the, the spirit of this code is to keep light from going up. I'll put shades on every one of my lights, as will, I think, the other businesses. But I'd like someone to work with me in a, in a way that's logical and also takes into account that we've got 25, we gave work to 25 employees. And I'd like to continue giving people work and continue doing what we do, but it's hard to do without light. So I will, I'm, I'm, right now, I'm working on the application and Sherry was incredibly helpful helping me go through this lengthy application. I would like to keep the lights up while we decide what we're gonna do about this, because it'll help all of us. Thank you.
Luke?
If I could just chime in on that, I owe Mr. Mann a comment. I know he had sent me an email the other day and I hadn't met him yet on this issue, so it is something we're aware of and be happy to work with you to resolve the issue. So, thanks.
Great. I have another card here for public communications. It looks like Bill, but I can't read the last name.
It's Miley.
Oh, Bill Miley. Okay.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley and I haven't lived here a long time. The need, the need that I'm gonna talk about is to serve customers, to serve guests, to serve ticket holders, to serve Ojai citizens. The problem is very limited parking on and around South Montgomery Street. I know there's a big city parking lot at the, down, down there, and there's a proposal for a bike park, I believe. But I know recently, there was a business opened at the corner of Montgomery and Ojai Avenue and somehow, they didn't have to provide parking or in lieu parking monies. In the past, I came to the planning commission and/or the city council and I wrote a little problem about parking and I said, "My wife and I decided on the weekend to go downtown for a restaurant meal. We drove downtown, we looked around, there was no parking on Ojai Avenue within a reasonable distance." You know, we're like in our 80s now, okay? There was no parking in the skate park, which seems to be a place that developments kinda get extra parking in the skate park. So we decided what we would do. Where is there lots of parking? There's lots of parking in McDonald's. So that's where we went. I think one of the big things that we, the city needs to do is to consider how to get more parking for the Ojai Art Center. Because I would assume that as things get tighter, there will be people who decide not to come, because they have to walk too far to get to the art center. And the art center's been 100, here 100 years, I think. So I would hope that you would consider that, get that parking study done and focus on South Montgomery and get more parking, especially for the art center. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke, something I would be personally curious about, I know the art center's been around for a long time. I don't know if it ever had any parking requirements attached to it and subsequently waived or whatever. They must have a CUP or something for their operation. I'd be interested to know how that is. Because I did notice that, that the chairman of the board, or whatever he was, of the art center was here talking about parking, but not art center parking.
Correct. Yeah, I've, I've never looked into this site. My, my guess, and I emphasize the word guess, if it's been operating that long, is it's probably something that was grandfathered and never had the parking. I know there's a, it's like a U-shaped drive, you could get a few cars in, in front of there, but obviously having an event...
Wouldn't handle the crowds they expect.
No, the building's not designed to handle parking on-site and it wouldn't be feasible to do, as with a lot of downtown Ojai. Most downtowns, you're dependent on street parking and central public locations to serve that. So I could check, but my guess would be anything operating that long probably predates permit requirements and predates modern zoning, so that would be what I would think.
So there's no requirement for parking there? Yeah, okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during public communications? All right. Seeing no indication, we'll move on to the consent item. Item number one, the minutes of the regular meeting of the planning commission, May 15th. And I would ask, are there any changes or corrections? Yes?
I have a very minor change. And this is at the roll call. I was not at the meeting and it states that I was and then it states that I wasn't.
Oh yeah, okay.
So, a little, a little of each, so you can strike me from being there.
Delete three words on the second line.
Exactly.
Anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move for approval of minutes for planning commission meeting, May 15th.
As corrected.
As corrected. Thank you.
My second.
Very good. Any discussion? Let's have a roll call, Sherry.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Excuse me, abstain.
Colossi?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Okay, so that's passed, three to one, or three to zero with an abstention. Very good. Item two, I have a card here, someone wants to speak on the, the applicant, which is either Ojai Valley School or Katrina Schmidt, on behalf of Ojai Valley School, has requested a continuance of this to June 19th. We can still hear public comment, but it will be equally appropriate when we bring it back as, I don't know, is this, is this to be a public hearing? Or is this, it is a public hearing item, yeah. Well, okay, I have a card here from, is it John Trent?
Yeah, that's for the, that's the Montgomery Street housing concept.
Oh, that's item three, okay. No problem. Okay. Then we'll move on to item three. The three, and, and we'll continue this other one, no need to renotice because we're continuing to a date certain?
Correct. It's continued to a date certain on June 19th, per the applicant's request.
Very good. All right, item three, the 302 and 304 South Montgomery Street Affordable Housing Conceptual Plan. This is a concept review. It is not a request for a permit, just for the audience's edification. We're not making any decisions tonight as to whether this project as presented or this project with any subsequent amendments would be approved or not approved. We're here on a concept review to hear about the project and provide comment, period. So if we could have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate that. You took my first line, as I wanted to emphasize that this is a concept review. Several emails I had received and comments that this is not an action item tonight. Staff is not recommending any action other than that the project be discussed, focusing on the main points of the project, and that way, we're able to get the applicant feedback should they choose to go forward and file an actual application on the project. The project itself, and I know the applicant's here tonight and will be giving a presentation, so I won't get into the details, but this is a housing project, essentially something like a modern cottage-style project. I'm reluctant to say tiny homes, after all the discussion about tiny homes over the last couple of years, there's no wheels involved here. But it is similar in layout. It is a addition of 25, I believe, prefabricated units to this site that is a little over one acre, two lots. There's an existing single-family residence on there now, that would remain as part of the proposal as shown, so you would have a total of 26 units on what's 1.07 acres. The site is presently designated by the general plan and zoning as village mixed use, so this is a designation that allows a wide variety of residential as-is. With the plan that's proposed, though, the number of units would require that the site get an SPL overlay to be able to accommodate the additional units. Under the village mixed use, you have a maximum density of eight per acre, so you could get, say, about nine units, possibly more with a density bonus for affordability. But since this proposal is looking at 25 additional units, you would need the SPL designation, which allows up to 20 per acre, and you would also then have to have a density bonus as well. Part of getting the SPL designation, the intent of that is to increase affordable housing. So in order to get that, you would have a commitment to provide affordable housing. The base amount cited in the code, which can be modified by city council, when they, if and when they were to apply that overlay, is a 35%, generally five, 15% very low, 15% low, and 5% moderate. But again, as I say, that could be modified by the city council. The council, obviously, since this would be a zoning action, would have to be the body that made that change if that were to happen.
Yep.
So that's really, there's obviously a lot of other issues associated. This project is unique in some ways, though I know, as I said, the city has talked about tiny home-type developments before. But you have issues of affordability, density, integration into the community. So you have a number of issues like that you'd have with this proposal, but again, first step prior to any permits would be the rezoning designation, which would have to come from city council. With that, since it's a concept review and we have an applicant here, I'd like to turn it over to them to run through their presentation, give you a little more detail on their proposed project.
Okay, we have any questions for staff? Go ahead, Kathy.
I have a question, Mr. Conley. How easier, what is the likelihood that the SPL zoning or overlay could take place for this project?
That's very tough to gauge. I don't believe, other than when the housing element was adopted, that there's been a site designated SPL since then.
So it'd be a, a new process, so to speak.
Correct.
There's about, about six or eight specific assessor parcels that are...
I'm aware of those, yeah.
That have the SPL.
Right.
That hasn't changed in years.
Right.
Correct. And you know, as with any zoning action, it would come before the planning commission again, for your recommendation on the rezoning. The city council, since rezoning is a legislative act, would have to adopt it.
Right.
So that's really the process. Then after that, you would still go through, again, the design review and other permits that would be required for the development, but, you know, again, you could have a residential project here now.
Right.
You know, VMU allows mixed use, single-family, multifamily residential, a wide range of commercial, many of which are conditionally allowed. So the question really with this is trying to get the density, because we're talking 26 units versus, say, nine under the existing VMU.
And I have one other question. Under the SPL, are there any, and this is just for clarification, any parking requirements or guidelines that are different than the existing code?
You do, based on affordability and number of rooms, essentially, and I may get some of this wrong, I think as you have smaller units, like a studio to one bedroom, though, you can request a one-for-one, which is much different than, say, the typical, usually, say, two or two-plus per unit. Again, these are also small units as well.
Right.
So you're not looking at, say, like a single-family home or a large floor-plan multifamily project. So that makes sense. You also have the considerations under the density bonus and a lot of the recent state laws where developers can request, based on affordability, to waive standards. So essentially, the more affordable units you have, the greater the affordability, the more you can request concessions from standards such as parking, which is probably the most typical request.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one follow-up question on the, the SPL zone. So is, is there criteria that is applied in the, in the appropriateness of zoning to that, or is it just, it's just, they were just sites selected for the housing element and not, not fitting into any certain...
You've got a variety of base zones that have SPL.
Okay.
Don't know all off the top of my head, but I think of the seven sites, you've got a number, there's a table in the zoning code that shows that as well. There's no existing VMU site with the SPL, though. But there are other sites across the board that have residential or non-residential designations, like for instance, the Bowling Alley site at the east end of town is an SPL overlay. We had the small city-owned Franklin and Montgomery lot a month or so ago here as a concept review.
You were residential with an SPL.
Yeah, that's an R2 with an SPL. So there's different base zones and you still have the opportunity to develop under the base zone. The SPL is a true overlay, it doesn't replace the base, it just gives you another option that if you wanna develop an affordable project, you can do so under the SPL and get greater density.
Yeah. The Bowling Alley property is commercial right now, I think.
Correct.
But with the SPL.
Right.
I, I was relieved to hear you say the applicant is here. I was wondering who the applicant is. Normally, it's here in the report and I'm wondering, maybe this is a question for that person, but is this, is the applicant the current owner of the property or a prospective owner of the property, or where are we?
They are not the current owner, and since they're getting up now, I can...
Oh, you have another question for staff, I'm sorry.
I have one question. I just wanted, if you could review the procedure for the SPL. I mean, we, it comes to us, we make a decision, then does it go to city council, how?
Yes, correct. As, as with all zoning changes, it would start with the planning commission for their recommendation to the city council. So that's really the two reviewing bodies. Planning commission's required to review and then it would go to city council for their decision.
I guess we can hear from the applicant. I have more questions for staff, but we can get to that later. Please, come forward, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Scott Dinavitz. I am a resident of Camrio and we have the... Let's see, is it this one?
Jeremy, do I need to turn it on?
I think I just turned it on, let's see.
It'll wake up shortly.
Okay.
There we go.
So again, my name is Scott Dinavitz, resident of Camrio and a longtime fan of Ojai. I've been up here, gosh, 30 years plus, on weekends. We've built houses actually on Oak Crest and Wormwood Street, right down in unincorporated Ojai about three years ago. Great project. We've done a lot of projects in Santa Barbara, Camrio, my office is in Calabasas. I am fourth generation in development, we're family-owned. My brother's actually here with me and my daughter and some friends, so we're a small group, but we do a lot of kind of interesting things. And we handle kind of all aspects of the project. So we do design work, we build the projects ourselves, and we manage the projects ourselves. So the buck stops with us, so to speak. What's interesting is, and we'll kinda talk about who we are, I'm part of a, a group, I belong to a temple in Calabasas called Orami, and we're handling homelessness right now. And as a developer, and I promise this will segue into the project, we're finding that developers are pushing out a lot of people that would normally, displacing people that would normally live in, in, in a community by building bigger and better. And by doing so, it pushes out a lot of people that would normally live in the area where they work, where the kids go to school, and we're kinda seeing that throughout the South land, throughout California, really, where we're building, you know, large apartment buildings that are expensive, big condominium projects, big housing projects, and pushing out people that are, that have lived there for years and years and years and they can't afford to live there anymore. And so it's actually kind of my directive now to kinda give back, in a sense, by providing projects that are win-win. What I would mean by win-win, something that's, that's profitable to us, but also profitable to the community. And I think this project specifically does that for both, both parties. And I'll kinda talk about that as, as we're going through the project. The units that we've kinda come up with, the word tiny home kinda came up, they're really not tiny homes, they're a little bit bigger than that, they're 500 to 600 square feet. So it's basically one and two-bedroom units with a nice living space. They are homes. They may be what's called modular built, which they're built either in a factory or they may be built on-site. We're not sure yet on that, but they are on foundations and they are homes. So it's, you know, got a roof and windows and air conditioning system, it's got washer and dryer, full kitchen, full bathroom, so it's an actual unit. The idea of doing this, this type of project, is to provide housing for a lower monthly rate than what we're used to. And I'm gonna talk about the rate. The way that I've got this designed now, that we've got this designed now, we believe that we can rent these for about 800, $1,800 per month, per unit, on average. And that is below the market rate rents for the area as, as a general term. We call this kind of a moderate rate unit. It's not low income, but it is moderate, so that, so that smaller families can afford and, and people on, on fixed incomes can afford to live here and not, not be burdened with, you know, super high cost to buy a home. So that's kind of the, the idea behind the project. Some of the other things that we're talking about doing here is, is green building. So all of these buildings would be very energy efficient, they would have solar panels on the roofs. We're planning on doing a master meter program, so that if, if this does go through, there would be a single meter, like, or a couple meters for water, gas, electric, and it, and the entire project would give back to that. So the solar system would be for the entire project, not for the individual unit, so it would lower the cost for the entire community, not just for that. We're planning on doing a community garden, so people have a garden area here. And another very important part, which I don't mention here, our intent is to keep all the non-native trees in place, so that the, the units would actually be built within that, that envelope. So let me kinda walk you through some of those things. And again, we're trying to lower the carbon footprint for the actual development and for the people that live here as well. So as you may know, we're talking about Willow Street in South Montgomery. It's 302 and 304 South Montgomery Street. It's a, just over an acre. Mr. Harvey lives in, in the unit right there, there he is, right there. The intent is that Mr. Harvey would stay until he wants to leave. He's not gonna go anywhere, we're not tearing down that unit. That unit would stay and Mr. Harvey can stay as long as he'd like. Again, we're not trying to... You're welcome. We're not trying to displace anybody here, we're trying to add units to the community. Let me kinda just talk you through the concept and through kind of what we've done here. So...
You mentioned the community garden. Where is it on there?
Uh, there's actually a couple of community gardens. So we have, there's actually, sorry, there's one up in here, there's one here, there's one in the back right there, and one right here as well, right there. So there's actually four... There's actually four small gardens that would be utilized for, for community gardens. So it's not one big garden, it's four smaller, smaller gardens. Because we believe, you know, if you're, if you're living in this back corner, back here, we want you to be able to use your garden with your neighbors, and then you've got other gardens that would be throughout. There's another one that would be under here.
Looks like that's all paved with parking spaces down in the lower left corner.
Uh, no, actually, there's right, right here is a, would actually be a green space. And I apologize for that. We didn't do a lot of labeling and landscaping, because we wanted to just do a concept review for you guys. We would actually get into those details once we did a, a real application, but I want you to be aware that that is very much on our mind, that we wanna bring, you know, what I call a community to you, where people can live, work, and actually enjoy their, their space. Because the units aren't, aren't exceptionally large, but we want you to be able to enjoy the outdoor space as well as the indoor space. The way that we've developed, we've developed the plans right now is, we do not have an entrance off Montgomery, we have an entrance off of Willow. It has a circular drive that's 26 feet clear. It has a circular drive that's 26 feet clear.
16 on one side, 26 on the other.
Correct. So, because it's got, sorry. Because it's got, the, the 26 foot clear would be the, what the fire department requirements would be for the, for the project. And the other one is just for a single, one way for, for, for the cars. The way that we have developed now. And then the unit types, so we've got a mix of different unit types. This is the kind of architecture that we're looking at right now, which is what I would call, you know, kind of a classic cottage style architecture. A typical unit would be, this is a, a one-bedroom type unit with a kitchen, galley-style kitchen, bathroom, washer and dryer, bedroom and living space with a front porch. Another couple of unit styles are a, a two-bedroom unit, similar layout. And then actually, we were thinking about doing possibly a two-story unit that's a one-bedroom to kind of throw in the mix. And it would look similar to this, this bottom design here. Again, it would be a pretty spacious living room, kitchen downstairs with a porch, and then upstairs would be a bedroom closet. And again, cottage style kind of a look to it. So it's...
That's your option two?
Uh, correct. Option three, sorry. Option two, correct. Option two is the, the two-bedroom, one-bedroom, two-story. The option three is a two-bedroom, one-story. And that's kind of, that's not it, but it's, it's, it's fairly simple to what we're kind of contemplating. One of the benefits and one of the things that why we're bringing this to you is we believe that this community really needs housing that people can afford to live in and, and work here. And, you know, we, coming up here for so long, we see a lot of people from LA buying houses and coming here on the weekends. And we see housing prices come up. When we sold the houses on Wormwood Street, not that long ago, I had, I think two of them had resold for a couple hundred thousand dollars more than we had sold them for. So we see, you know, rising prices of real estate. And we're hoping that, you know, a project like this can bring, will actually not, not displace people that are already living here and give, you know, a nice living environment for people as they maybe are aging out of their homes, maybe want to go into something smaller and, and still be in their community. So that's kind of our thought process. It's not, it's not intended to be a short-term lease of any type, you know, like a, you know, we're not, we're not intending on doing any kind of Airbnb or anything like that situation. This would be long-term, long-term rentals. So we're coming, we're coming to you with, you know, we'd like to hear your feedback on what you think of the site plan, the architecture. We are in, in contract to purchase this property. We have to purchase it next week. That's when we're, we're supposed to purchase it. So your feedback's kind of important to us. I am taking a gamble. I'm not saying that this is the end-all, be-all by any means, but our kind of backup is to build, you know, a seven, eight, nine market rate houses on the site and call it a day. I mean, I can do that. I, I don't have a problem doing that, I would do great. I have no, and it, pencils does very well. But I believe in my heart, and I'm being honest with you, that this is something that I really believe the community needs and I wouldn't bring it to you if I didn't think so. And I'm hoping that you think so too, and maybe there's a way, you know, to work this out so everybody wins. And I know there's a lot of issues that come up with this. There's, everybody talks about parking and, you know, that's, that's a super high dense project for a community like this. I think that the way that it's designed, I think it's really, really nice. And I think that it would live very, very well. I would be happy to live in one of those units, no problem. And I, and I, because the community itself is so special that the way that people live and work here, it, it, the, the community is just, it's so open and so nice. And I think that this would kind of lend to that. So I want to hear your thoughts. I want to hear what you guys think.
Kathy?
Yes, so I have, I have a few questions, at least to start. In our staff report, it said that the approximate square footage would range from 240 to 500 square feet for the units. Now you had mentioned 500 to 600. Is, is there, you talked about a possibility of doing a two-story, would that be...
That would be on the higher side, that would be closer to 600 square feet.
So would that be, are you saying that's your maximum?
Kind of, yeah, by six, about 600. Again, this is very rough. We've kind of come up with, with those kind of things. We're not thinking anything like, we're all of a sudden going to get, show you a 1,500 square foot unit, no. I think they're going to stay on that smaller side. Again, it's affordable by design. So we're hoping that, and we're stick, sticking with the one and two-bedroom concept right now.
Then, so, then you did say that you're kind of going for a moderate rate and it's not necessarily considered like low income. And so basically you would be moderating the rate, meaning it's affordable by design?
That's correct.
Okay. And then would you propose or expect maybe some kind of deed restriction or something that, to keep the rates low? Or how would that be handled?
Right now...
Or moderated?
I believe right now, because of the size of the units themselves, it kind of self-moderates. It does it by design, if you will, and also by the market rate, right? So if you look at units, a house, for example, that's two to three bedrooms, much bigger unit, that's renting for $2,100 to $2,400 a month. It automatically kind of lends itself to that, that lower amount. Our intent was not to deed restrict it because, again, we're not asking for any government assistance.
Okay.
Other than, we would be asking for a density bonus, which is part of the package for providing, providing these unit types, but not actually deed restricting it.
Let me just jump in for one second. On part of the, the SPL zoning, because again, it's, the, the purpose of that is creating affordable housing. You get the higher density, the city gets assurances of affordability.
Right.
I agree that you're, you're affordable by design because they're much smaller units, but we would have to have also a portion, and that can be worked out. But like I said, SPL has an assumption in the code of a 35% affordable rate, which can be modified and within, you know, very low, low and moderate income. So there would have to be a deed restricted. Yeah, so say 35%. Some portion would have to be deed restricted for, say, a period of like 55 years. So in addition to affordability by design, you get affordability with certainty based on incomes of people who could live in, in the rental housing.
Right.
This is, this is all in the municipal code, Title 10, Chapter 2.
And then a couple more questions. So basically you would be renting or leasing, none of these are for sale?
Correct.
Okay. And then, and then of course, you know, we get to the parking, which is always an issue. And, you know, per our code in the VMU or anywhere else in the city, it's, you know, two to 2.5 parking spaces per unit. And you're proposing less than that.
We're proposing one, one-to-one, one space per, per unit, correct?
Right. And so my question would be, or is, you know, when you're renting or leasing these out, part of the covenant, I suppose, would be you're allowed one parking space. And what if they have more than one vehicle? Where are they going to park? That's an issue on Montgomery Street and what have you. So I'm just wondering if you've kind of thought a little bit forward on that, is how you would address that?
Got it. I, I think we have thought a little bit about it. Again, we're, that's why we're here, is to discuss kind of the issues. We believe that parking, again, by design, one-bedroom unit, we're hoping that it's going to be leased to a couple that have a car. Again, downsizing, hoping for, for people that are in that kind of area. A two-bedroom unit, hopefully for family that has, you know, a car or two. So, so the answer is yes, we do believe that some of the cars would be parked on Montgomery in front of the property if they had an excess car. So yes, there would be some, some units that would have two cars. We, we do understand that.
Yeah, I think that's going to be one of your, well, one of your challenges.
Got it.
Somehow get that resolved because I know on Montgomery, it is an issue. I mean, the art center is there, there's other housing around there. Overflow parking from the downtown, just sightlines and the bike trail or the multi-use trail crossing there. So that's something you're going to have to really take a look at. All right, well, I'll stop for now. I'm sure my other fellow commissioners have questions.
I, I did pencil out from the, from the drawings we were provided. Option one looks like 363 square feet, not counting the porch. And option three is 380 about. And option two, the two-bedroom, that looks like it's over 500.
Two-story.
Two-story, yeah. Okay. Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lottis? Would you rather wait?
No, no. So could you just elaborate a little bit more on your thinking about affordability? And have you looked at the, the range of affordability, including going down to very low or low income? Have you thought about what that would, what implications that might have for your project and whether that's how feasible that might be?
Right. Right now is, the way that I've kind of looked at this is a moderate income project so that all the units would be kind of in that same kind of price range because of the design of them. I did not take into consideration, we did not take into consideration the fact that if we were to be burdened, excuse the word burden, because it is a burden, with a lower rate for, for rent on a unit type, what that unit would look like. I don't know that we could provide, part of, I'll, I'll back up a second. Part of the problem is, is providing enough, the proper housing for the right amount of money without government assistance, okay? So we do a lot of projects, we're contractors as well. We build low-income housing for other developers. And the way that they get that done is through tax credits, where they are actually being reimbursed for the cost for the unit type because the rent doesn't pay for the unit. So our intent is that we provide a moderate income project. The entire project is moderately priced, rather than trying to stick very low income units in with market rate units. Because the way that we've designed it, that is the right market rate, right? Eight, 17, $1,800. You wouldn't be able to get any more money for them because they're affordable by design because of the size of them. So it would affect the project greatly if there was a requirement to put very low on the project. Our intent was to design a moderate, which is, which is a low-income project. Moderate is low income. It's just all of them are considered moderate income, not low or very low income. So I, again...
But you're using the, are you using the, so you're not really using the county standards for...
County standards right now, correct if I'm wrong. I think moderate income for a family of four is $96,000.
That's correct.
It's well within that range. We're far below that. I think we, we may, and I haven't done the numbers yet, but I think we'd almost make family of three or two within that range. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at that.
But even, I just want to jump in for the, we've got the table in the staff report. So like for a family of four, low income is 81.1. So I was just thinking when you, if you said 1,800 a month, times 12 is 21.6.
Yeah, so we're...
So you're under a third, easily under a third low.
So I think we do meet those requirements. So I, again, we haven't contemplated that, that portion of it yet, so we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that.
Okay.
The, as I understand, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Corbin, you have some questions?
I don't have questions, I have comments, but I...
Okay. The, the very low income, and this, this project, as you have proposed it, requires a zoning change to get this many units on the property. You understand that?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes.
Okay. And to get that zoning change by the current ordinance, unless the city council decides to change it for this one parcel, you have to provide 15% or, in this case, what's that? That's about four, four units out of 25 for a very low income, which is 50,000. And then 15% for that low income, the 81, and 5% for the 96. And then the rest of it is your choice. I'm curious, as Mr. Connolly pointed out, under the base zoning for this property right now, the VMU, you can put nine units on this, on this pair of parcels. I'm wondering, with the plan that you have for allowing lower income folks to live there, how many units do you need on that property to make your numbers? It sounds like 26 being, or 25, 26 with a density bonus, 30, more than three times what's allowed, sounds like a pretty good deal for the developer. It has certainly impacts on the neighborhood. But I'm wondering where in between nine and 30, can you pencil out this business case? I'm not looking for specific numbers, but...
But I can actually answer that question. Because it's, it's actually, it, the project turns into a different project. So the project would become a for-sale project because the land is, is expensive. It's not inexpensive. So in a, in a, in a scenario where we stuck with the VMU zone, I would propose a for-sale market rate project where we would build, you know, cottages.
You're allowed nine, in that case.
Yeah, probably 1,500 to 2,000 square foot units or whatever they would be, and sell in the, you know, 800,000 to, you know, million-dollar mark. So that would be a very different project completely. The, the intent of doing a rental-type community here, again, was to provide, we believe, needed housing. And you need a large number of units, I'm not saying exactly 26 of them, but it's close to that, to pay for the land and the fees and the, everything that is accompanied with the development. Because unfortunately nowadays, there, we have MS4 to deal with, which is, as you know, very cumbersome and expensive. The development fees are expensive, the land is expensive, and, you know, the units themselves are expensive to build. So there, there is a, it's really an on-off switch. If it's not 20, 26, 25, 24 units, then it's eight or nine market rate units. And there's really no, unfortunately, and I've run the numbers, there's no 18, I know the question, there's not 18 or 19 or 24 rent units. It's not in the cards because of the, the land's too expensive to do that and all the other costs associated with it.
Okay. But your, your intent is to continue to own the land and all of the units? You said you were going to have one meter for electricity, one for water?
Well, what I'm saying is master metered...
Wrapped into the rent?
Right, correct. Master metered, I'm not sure if it's one, two, or three, or five meters, but it would be master metered for the entire community. Again, to keep the affordability component on it and people not having to deal with, with those expenses.
Can you explain how that works?
Sure.
Master meter?
Sure. So for, I'll give you an example for a water meter. Right now, I believe there's two water meters on site. You know, they're three-quarter inch water meters. We would request from Casitas Water, uh, Casitas Water District that we get a two-and-a-half inch water meter. That water meter would be installed, the bill comes to us as the owner, and we prorate to each individual unit with the intent, right, of, of, of only passing on the expense for their portion. And the way we do that is through, they have smaller meters called Emon meters, which are small little meters throughout to make sure that they're not wasting water, right? It's not to monitor them too much, but monitor them to the point where, hey, the, the neighbor left their water on all night long. Well, they're going to get, they're going to get ding that. We're hoping that, that they, it, it makes people more aware of the, the cost and the footprint that they're providing by, by, by showing them that. So that's how, that's how we do it. We keep the cost down by, by master metering those things. And the same thing like for, with the Edison meters. So the electric meters would be a master meter situation. All the power that's generated from the individual units would go back to the master meter and it would lower the cost to the, to the, to the owners for the, for the electric.
I'd like to continue if I could. As, as Commissioner Nolan said, parking is going to be a big challenge here. Even assuming that you can get the zoning change. The, the normal requirement, whether it's single-family or multifamily dwellings... The, the normal requirement, whether it's single-family or multifamily dwellings on a particular parcel, is anywhere from two to two-and-a-half parking spaces per unit. Do you have any intent to regulate, and if so, how, the number of automobiles or vehicles that, that the renter of each unit actually brings to the project? I was looking at the property, walked around it the other day, middle of the day, like one o'clock in the afternoon, and I found a parking space on the east side of Montgomery, so that it was convenient to walk around and look at the property. Willow both sides was full, Montgomery west side was full. I don't know, if, if there's an average of two cars per unit, I don't know where the other twenty-five cars would go.
Got it.
People, people might be parking a mile away from the project, which doesn't sound practical. I don't think they can park down, down Montgomery, where it heads down toward the creek, there's no, there's no parking down there. So, I'm, I'm wondering, have you thought about this? Have you thought about how you would control, in effect, how many excess vehicles you dump on the community to put twenty-five or twenty-six units on this property?
I have some thoughts about that. Typically, in a community like this, we would allow a car as part of their lease, and if they had an additional car, and we can discuss this as, I'm not sure how this would work, but, you know, we would charge a hundred, two-hundred dollars a month per car, or whatever we do, and we give some of it back, because I know there is a, a parking lot not too far away from there, that's a technically public parking lot, and maybe some of that money goes towards the maintenance of that parking lot. That's my thought about it. I, you know, as, again, these units are, are very small, they're, you know, three, four-hundred square feet, and we're hoping that the people that live here are downsizing, or they have one car, and again, they're low to moderate income, I don't know how many people can afford two cars in their household. So, we're hoping, and it is a hope, and don't get me wrong, I know it's an issue, but that, that, that people would have, you know, a car, and if they have more than one car, they're penalized for it, and that some of that money would actually go towards maintenance of the parking, parking lot, you know, on Montgomery. So, that's, that's my thought on it, and I don't know if that's not a strong enough answer, but that's my thought at this point.
Luke, the parking in Lou fee is what, six thousand dollars a space?
It's a little over seven thousand.
Little over seven thousand.
Yeah, recently adjusted, so, right.
So, how would seven thousand times twenty-five work into your project?
I have full, I have a full fee structure, that's the reason why the number is twenty-six units. We have, I've done all the calculations on all the fees, and I have that in, in the numbers already, so I have that built in to-
Have the parking in Lou fee-
Yes.
-in your business case?
Yes.
I see.
As, school, full school fees, I'm not asking for any, any concessions on any fees, so-
Understand.
School fees, meter fees, all the fees.
Would that, Luke, would that be enough money to make any parking spaces anywhere?
Obviously, I wouldn't be able to answer that offhand, but parking is prohibitively expensive, and I know we don't have a lot of funds in there right now. I mean, obviously, getting funding is a start. I, I don't think we're going to be able to answer any questions in detail about parking tonight, other than to point out, it's an issue-
Yeah.
...for the commission, and, you know, again, there, there are concessions based on affordability, reducing the required parking, but I think what a lot of the commissioners are asking is, in the real world-
There's a resultant burden on the community.
You can require one, but am I going to get two? So, I think that's the question of even if ten or, you know, fifty percent of the people own two cars, and fifty percent own one, you still have that differential. And I really don't know how it would work. I mean, again, fairness, small units, you probably are going to have fewer cars. How many fewer, that's the open question.
Yeah, I mean, it's a real, listen, it's a real-world problem, I'm not going to skirt around it, right? But how do we tackle it, right? Because I'm trying to provide enough housing, and also provide parking, and pay for an in-Lou fee, how can we tackle it? I'm not sure, it's a, it's a very valid question.
But your, your bottom-line case at this point is, it's either something like twenty-five or something like eight or nine?
Correct.
Okay. Please, go ahead, Bobby.
Well, we talk a lot about affordable housing in this town, and in our meetings, and if we actually really want it, we have to make that effort, and we have to realize that a developer needs to be able to afford to build a project that we desperately need, and there are concessions. Now, my daughter and son-in-law would fit into this bracket. They live in the house with me, because they can't afford to live anywhere else in this town, and they have one car from nineteen ninety-four. It's called Granny, because it was my daughter's grandmother's car. And they can't afford two cars, and that's the reality of it. So, if we really want to turn this town into something that's not only for wildly rich people, we have to make some concessions. Now, so much of what I read about parking and planning in cities is that if we stop making it easy for people to have three and four cars, they won't have them. And that's a reality. If you can't drive into an old city in Europe and park your car, you don't do it. And you can't, you can't have this car mentality and make change. If you're saying you don't want it, then you have to do something about it. We've had other instances-
We're slipping into deliberations here.
Okay.
I'm trying to get questions of the, of the applicant out of the way, and then public comment out of the way, and then we'll come back to that, if that's all right?
That's fine with me. But I just thought that in this extensive conversation about parking, we have to do a reality check here.
Yes.
I mean, people move-
And if we make, if we make concessions, it's more than just the city bearing the burden, it's the neighborhood bearing the burden.
But we don't really know if these people are going to have that many cars.
No, but there doesn't seem to be any way to control it either. Anyway, are there other questions for the applicant at this point?
Well, I thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Could I just say one thing on-
We may give you the chance to come back if there are comments that you want to respond to.
Not a comment, sir, just on behalf of Commissioner Powers, who called about an hour before the meeting. He's the commissioner who's absent tonight. He really had a primary focus on, I saw in your presentation, you had green building materials bullet-pointed, and that was really his comment and assurance of using non-toxic building materials, and kind of minimizing your footprint as much as possible, was something he wanted to convey on, on the project, was seeing that as a key issue. So, since that hadn't come up, I just wanted to put that out there as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. Public speakers, first up is Jean Mannenin. Is that, did I say that right?
You did. Yes, I'm Jean Mannenin, and-
You can mic them, so we can hear you.
Oh, I live on South Montgomery Street. One of my first concerns is the impact of water usage under the current and future drought conditions, and the impact on the additional parking, which has already been addressed quite a bit. But it's not only the parking on South Montgomery Street or Willow, there's all the more parking in town. That's going to add to the congestion that is already there. Also, the additional driving traffic on South Montgomery to Creek Road, which is already so busy and not enforced with the speed limit that's there. The speed limit is already thirty miles per hour, which is over the usual twenty-five mile, and now there'll be more traffic going there. And again, I've, I've talked to the city, to the police department about the enforcement that there is lack of on that street. Another concern that I had, which I've already been clarified of, is the restriction for owner occupancy in these units. I thought for affordable housing, they would be sold to people who could afford to buy a unit, but it looks like there will be one owner for this whole development. And I'm wondering if there, you know, what kind of homeowners association there will be, or a governing board, and what, what kind of oversight there will be for these tenants that will be renting. I was hoping they would be able to buy it, but that's not happening. Just one more thing, I'm wondering what the basis is for the conceptual design on the architecture style. There was something in the, in the write-out about how it would integrate into the existing neighborhood, and I'm wondering what, what those features are. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Luke, I, I believe the, the category of affordable housing could mean either sale or rent, is that correct?
That's correct. I think increasingly these days, though, you've moved much more towards rental as a solution for affordable housing, but either for sale-
Can't come up with a down payment for a house, probably.
Yeah, you, you would still have deed restrictions, you would still have income restrictions, all that would apply. So, I think in many ways, the prevailing view is that rental housing is easier to manage for affordable housing. But both are options, under state law and under our code.
Okay.
So, that, again, that would be the option of, we would control affordability and the degree of it, but whether it's owner-occupied or rental, something really would be the applicant's choice with what he wants to pursue. It sounds, sounded like from his presentation.
Similar income restrictions apply.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Affordable means affordable, it's based on income, so.
Okay. Okay, very good. Next up is Hank Mannenin.
I don't have too much to add to what Jean just said, but, yeah, I'm Hank Mannenin. Jean and I live on South Montgomery Street, right across from the project that's being presented here.
You're in, you're in one of the smaller homes, not the Los Arboles?
No, we're in the home that you guys approved about ten years ago that we built, it's the Cedar Home.
Okay, before my time, but yeah, I recognize the name, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, were any of the commissioners here then, we did that?
Maybe Kathy was.
No, it was before me, but I know the house that we bought in.
Yeah, yeah, well, we cooperated with you quite a bit in designing what we did, because you were pretty insistent that we didn't do certain things, but very insistent we did other things, which we worked out, and it, we're happy to have it. But I'm wondering about the, all the hard surface in this compact area, the roofs and the pavement, what it does to the runoff requirements that Ojai has. I know you, you have to be able to handle all the water that comes off, something like that, and I think that this might be a little bit heavy on, on the hard surface. Another thing about the water, he talked about going from a couple of three-quarter-inch meters to a two-and-a-half, well, that, a two-and-a-half meter takes about thirteen times as much water as a three-quarter. So, it really is going to be a lot more water usage. And, and part of the usage, frankly, is going to be, all this open parking underneath these oak trees, they're going to want to wash their cars twice a week, and, because they get pretty messy, we know, we live there. And that amounts to about eleven units of water per month from the, from the water department. And the other thing, too, about this rental business, where's your pride of ownership? That's an important thing. There's been nationwide, corporations have been buying up units and putting them up for rent, and I just don't think, when you have people renting, they care as much about the place as if you own it and live in it and take care of it. That's about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Bill Miley.
For the record, my name is Bill Miley, I've lived here a long time. And as most of you know, I've been very active in the past six years on affordable housing needs and proposals. Couple of things to start with. These are nothing like tiny homes. These are modular manufactured homes, they're designed to meet state, federal regulations, they're well-made. I presented models to this commission, and also the city council, showing park homes and small manufactured homes. We've had historical cottages in the past. Las Robles, when they were built, they wiped out Evergreen cottages, and there were twenty-five of them just across the street. We've had Mallory, we have Mallory Way cottages, cottages of flowers, historically, we've had Valley cottages. Cottages are part of this community. Without an SP overlay, this project goes nowhere, and I support one, it's really important to have it. On the parking issue and vehicle ownership, restricting parking to one vehicle, I support. That's what we want to do on the city's Montgomery Street product, parcel, project. About two years ago, the city council hired a nationally-recognized planning firm to do neighborhood planning. They recommended that this future zoning reduce part of vehicle parking, and also requirements for parking sites in residential zones. Limiting it parking, limiting parking to one is not enough. Vehicle ownership has to be restricted. Each renter's contract should have a condition for restricting ownership to one vehicle by DMV records, and if it's found that they own or operate it, their, their contract violates it, and they're out. Regarding visitor parking, there needs to be some on-site, probably seven. Maybe the driveways can be deep enough for tandem parking, temporary parking for a visitor. On affordability, state guidelines are in the proposal, I like that, but with affordability being a hundred percent, it has to be fifty-five years in order for the city to give an SP overlay and get a guarantee that they're going to have affordable units for a long time. My initial overall opinion is, I like what is being presented, it has to have one vehicle ownership per unit, and no city, no, no street parking in fifty-five years. Regarding renters, I believe place in a covenant of development that will restrict it to people who are part of the workforce in the city, low and moderate income, requiring those people who live outside and come in, they would be eligible, and on people who live inside and are paying more than thirty percent would be eligible. Mobile home parks usually have only one car per, okay? I believe the city needs to go in a new direction, less parking requirements, less vehicles, more Uber, Lyft, public transport, bicycles, electric scooters, motorized bikes, motorcycles, and walking. And then, in conclusion, street parking on Montgomery is a real problem, parking on Montgomery is a real problem. The LIR Center needs to have support for more parking, because they're going to strangle if people can't park and go to their presentations. Thank you.
Thank you. John, John Trent?
Hi, John Trent, I'm up at four oh nine Franklin, so the other Montgomery property. So, I was here last time, parking obviously was an issue with our place, too. Sounds like parking's going to be an issue here. I just wanted to, it's nothing that has been said already, but also, the, the intersection of South Montgomery and Ojai Avenue is already pretty difficult to navigate, so we're going to put more cars on that street, it's going to be, get even, you know, it's going to be harder. Ojai's a tourist town, we all- Ojai's a tourist town, we all know that, right? So, you know, we have tourists that come in from the 33 and we have the tourists that come in from Creek Road. So they come in off South Montgomery or they're coming in from the 33. So if we put more cars on there, in that area, we're going to have, again, issues with the parking. I just don't see how it could work with that much, that many vehicles in that area. And I don't know if we've done a study on that street, just to, I mean, you, you did your, Steve, you did a walkthrough on there just to kind of check it out, see what the parking was like, and it's already a problem. Just trying to go to Walkers and, and get dog food is a problem, you can't even park down there. So I don't, I don't see how it could work. And also having a family of four with a one-bedroom apartment that's 500 square feet with one car, I just, I don't see it happening, I just, I don't, I think if you're a family of four living in Ojai, you got to drive to Ventura sometimes, you can't shop at Rains every day. You know, you got to go down to Ventura to buy clothes, you got to go to Ventura to buy food. You know, we can't shop at Little Westridge all the time, or Westridge, or, I mean, Barnes maybe, but. So I think we need to get out of kind of our idea of what this is and realize, okay, well, we're in a town that's kind of far away from a lot of services that we need access to. We have to drive to Ventura, we have to drive to Oxnard, there's a lot of health issues, why we have to get down to Ventura. I don't know anybody that can survive here without a car. It's really difficult. So that's, that's my two cents. Okay.
For your time, sir. And John Davis. Davis Brown Architecture.
Chairman Commissioners, I, I thought this was a really obvious point, and I'm surprised that it's come to me to make it, but I have some health concerns about the fact that this project is adjacent to the Southern California Edison substation. That would seem to be an unfortunate choice for any kind of residential development. And particularly perhaps even more so, a, a low to moderate income development. So I, I, I'm just sort of flabbergasted that this hasn't come up yet. It seems to me that those, that particular piece of property is not a suitable site for residential use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this item? Mr. Daddy? I, I have a card here from Bill Miley for item four. Oh, it says item one. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Got it wrong. Is that, listen, this is going to be about the planning commission again. I'm very disappointed about this planning commission. I hear a lot of things about, we need to do this, we need to do that. When offered the chance to change what we need to do, this commission took a pass. You had a chance to go into Title 10, you had the chance to look at it, you had a chance to condition it, you had a chance to make recommendations on what cars per lots were going to be. There was a number of things that you had a chance to do. And over the last five or six years, it just hasn't happened. And so I would wish you folks would go ahead and take a look at those things that you recommend and condition, that the council go ahead and put into the rules so it makes it easy, so everybody's not asking for a variance to what our codes are, if our codes need to be changed to one, change it to one for parking. If they need to be changed to one and a half, make that recommendation. Let's make it easy for people to understand the rules. So with this project here, it is a problem with parking. But that's going to be solved here by the end of the year with SP 50, Weiner out of San Francisco. And what we're going to see is, we're going to see four-story units conditioned. And we won't really have very much choice about what we're going to do. And then we're going to look and say, wow, we wish we would have had a three-unit or a two-story or something else, rather than the inevitable. And what I think we need to do is, we've looked and we've had infighting and we've had some bitter fights on three-story units. And it shouldn't be three stories, we have rules that give height requirements. So when I saw somebody come up at the hotel and says, we're going to put in a three-story hotel, I'd have never told you guys that. I would have said, we're going to stay under the code height requirements. It would have been pretty simple. And I wouldn't have mentioned setbacks, I would have said, we're going to stay within the setbacks. I think if this developer can put in three-story back next to the, to the east side and get adequate parking, then I think you should consider that. I don't know if that's what they want to do, but I think that's what we really need to be look at, looking at. I can't think of a better place. I'm not for you giving up parking, I am for you giving up heights. Some of those trees, Mr. Harvey's got trees twice as old as he is, and that's a plus, Mr. Harvey. You've got some beautiful trees, massive trees, that are going to shield that entire back portion. So you wouldn't even three, see a three-story building back there. It would be totally obscured, and if you haven't gone out there, the amount of trees he has on that one acre is enormous. So it's not going to be about view. We had a councilwoman that used to scream, well, you're going to lose your side of the mountains. Yeah, you got 120-foot tree, it's not going to be the 30-foot building, you got 130-foot tree. And so we would use these obscure arguments that I think aren't relevant. So I, I think we do need housing in some form. Smaller units seem to be more affordable. They're not really, but you know, they're, they're scaled down, so they cost monthly, they don't cost less per square foot. I think you need to find a way to retain the parking, because the parking is worse than horrible there. That intersection is pretty tough. Street parking leads to vandalism, it leads to crime, it leads to lots of other things when you have vehicles on parking. Take a look at our police blotter and see where our issues are. Break-ins are in cars. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else out there wish to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Gail Motica, and I live across the street. And-
On Willow, on Montgomery?
South Montgomery. I was curious about, you mentioned the bowling alley was already zoned for SPL, is that right? So I'm wondering why that wouldn't be a better site, maybe? Plenty of parking out there and... So that's one thought I had. And the other is, the substation, I had the most fascinating experience last night. I woke up at, for some reason, I guess the raccoons, but anyway, around 2:00, 2:15, and there was flashing light and the sound of crackling electrical something. And I jumped up and went out, and it was coming from the substation, is all I could tell. I mean, I don't know where else it was getting from. Certainly wasn't over my place, which is what I was afraid of. So that's, it is a big concern that you brought up. And we already, living as close as we do, which isn't that close, we already have effects from that. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to bring up.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing. I'd like to pick up with some questions for staff, and we can do some deliberation here and provide more feedback to the, to the applicant. I noticed, Luke, that, that Title 10, nowhere talks about SPL and setback in the same paragraph anywhere. So I'm not sure what, what the setbacks, if the setbacks for VMU are met with this project, I understand that. But I don't know what the rules would be for an SPL overlay. Does that reduce the setbacks in general? Because I couldn't find anything about SPL and setbacks. So I don't know if the location of the units here, for example, would be legal when, when the municipal code appears to be silent on the issue.
Yeah, I think you do have flexibility under SPL, similar to like the plan development permit, which is also discussed as an option to develop in the VMU or for more significant projects on other sites. So I think you're, you're essentially getting it through, through concessions as well for affordability. You can have reduced setbacks, as I said, that based on affordability. And getting a density bonus, you can have up to, say, three concessions if you had a maximally affordable project. So you can get a reduced parking requirement, you could get exceptions from building height to exceed that. You could have exceptions from setback requirements. So I think there are options, because the SPL, you're, you're essentially, you're putting an overlay on a site that's allowing you to do something different than you could otherwise do. And I think the presumption really is, is that the city's getting a benefit through doing that, certainly through affordable housing, probably through elevated design as well. But in doing that, you can have-
Elevated, elevated-
A higher quality design, say, or something like that. But you're, you're getting into this sort of private benefit and public benefit as well, going through this process. So there's, there's, we would clearly have to get into this more, more detail, but again, there's a, a plan development permit option that essentially gives you an ability to design and lock in your own standards for that project. That's something that also comes before the commission, I'm not sure how many have been done. It's something that's done for, again, more significant types of projects like this.
It's been discussed, I think, for the projects up on Aliso and Mallory.
I would imagine it has come up from time to time there. But essentially as part of that process, and that's a very common one in other cities, is that where you're deviating from the traditional development standards of a zoning district, you're kind of locking in your own standards for that project. So I believe SPL gives you that flexibility, and certainly the plan development permit process does explicitly give you that. And one thing in VMU is the PD permit process is generally reserved for large sites, like five acres or more. The VMU is the one district where you don't have that requirement. So a one-acre site would qualify in VMU.
For plan development.
For a plan development, correct. It's the only zoning district in the city that allows you to have a smaller lot and have that flexibility. But I think that's, that's something, as you get to that stage, we would be looking, as the project gets more defined, in terms of what's the amount of affordability, but also things like development standards, there's probably going to be some deviation. And obviously, we've talked a lot about parking tonight. I think there, there's certainly the ability to go to one space per unit, but then again, you have the ability, you, you really need to think through, is that going to be adequate? What are the assurances that if you allow one per unit, that it works? Because I think you, you've heard from my short time here and what I've seen too, South Montgomery's probably about as tough a parking area as you have. You know, much more so than even North Montgomery. It's much easier to park there and cross the street a lot of times.
Okay. On your staff report, page three, the, the fourth paragraph down, talked about a density bonus up to 35%. I don't, I don't get the math. 10-2704-G1 tells you about the density bonus, I think, for the base VMU. But I didn't, I didn't find, on my first search at least, a 35% density bonus, maybe that's with the SPL overlay?
That's actually under the density bonus section of the code, which I don't have in front of me right now. That's not- Thank you.
907, right, okay. I looked there and I didn't see 35% anywhere, but I may have missed it.
Let me see, I thought that was in the staff report as well. Yeah, so it's table 4-6, density bonus provisions. So if you were to look at that table, you go down to the bottom right-hand corner, and it shows the density bonus factor. So essentially, you could have, like, if you had 40% moderate units, you could get a density bonus of 35%. You could have a much lesser level of very low or low income to get the 35%.
That, that had me going, because the SPL requires, for example, 15% very low. And the table doesn't go that far.
Yes, and I think there's a disconnect between the table and what's in the SPL, I mean, there-
One more inconsistency in the code, yeah.
They're both, certainly SPL relates directly to affordable housing. And so does the density bonus in a way, either affordable housing or target populations that are underserved. But for instance, if you have something that qualified for SPL, you're already automatically qualifying for a high-density bonus. Just by the nature of it, would have, it would typically be 35% affordable units right there. So you probably automatically have a 35% density bonus on top of the maximum for SPL.
The density bonus equals the percentage of affordable units?
The density bonus increases with both the number of units and the degree of affordability. So low and very low-income units are going to count more than moderate-income units would in granting a density bonus, because you're reaching a lower income level.
But the SPL has minimum requirements for very low and low-
Correct, 15-
And moderate.
Right, 15, 15 and 5, so 15 very low, 15 low, 5 moderate. Again, with the provision that the city council can change that. It's at their discretion. Those numbers are in the code, but I believe the last sentence of that section then says also, the city council has discretion to modify those requirements.
Well, they can modify anything in the code, yes.
It's, it's a zone, but if I'm talking to somebody though, my base assumption are those numbers in the code, is that 35% under the SPL, which it really has nothing to do with the 35% density bonus factor. They're two independent things.
Okay.
Yeah, density bonus is just saying, if, if you had, whatever the number of units you came in with, you would qualify for up to 35% if you're providing the appropriate number of affordable units. It could be less than 35%.
Right, okay, and the 15% low income, for example, is partway up the table there.
If you had-
But the 15% very low is way off the bottom end of the table.
Correct, this, yeah, correct, this only goes to 11% very low. So if somebody came in with a 15% very low project, they would already qualify for a density bonus of 35%.
I see, okay.
Right, it's, I, I would agree, that's not the most easily readable table I've ever seen. But in the staff report, I just tried to point out that 35% is essentially your maximum density bonus. It could be less than that, based on what you proposed.
And this again is assuming that there's a variance on the parking, that there's a rezoning with an SPL overlay? And I'm not sure what else, at least those two things.
Well, yeah, SPL overlay, the project that was shown tonight, there's no way you can do it, because you can't get the number of units. So that, that's a given. And with the SPL overlay comes the affordability requirement. So that, most likely, it kicks you into some sort of a density bonus. So all those things have to happen to get the numbers. With granting a density bonus, the project developer can ask for concessions or deviations from development standards, such as parking and possibly setbacks or other things like that. So, you know, all of those would be in play, based on what I'm seeing here.
All could be requested.
Correct, if, if, you know, if this project were to stay the way it is now, you're certainly not going to get a height deviation, because there's no height issue. But you could have a setback issue. You know, even other things, as you pointed out, the road widths and all of that. You know, again, and that's, none of this has been viewed across the board by all city departments, such as fire or anything like that. So all of that's subject to change. I see there's one access point, for instance, on this site plan. I don't know that that would necessarily be something that you could have after fire were to review. You may need a secondary access.
Yeah, I remember we had, we had a proposed subdivision up north of Grand Avenue, not too far north of Grand Avenue, I don't remember who was on Daly or Drown or where it was, but it was one of those areas where there's very deep lots. They wanted to make three parcels out of one. And the fire department said, we have to have at least 22 or 29 or something feet width of roadway and larger somewhere toward the back, so that a fire truck can turn around and get out again. And there was only one exit, one entrance there. I mean, there were, there were two separate roads, but each had only one exit and one entrance. So I didn't see that as, as positively a problem. But I do see that as a problem here. I guess that's about all my questions right now. Yes, go ahead.
Does the parking have to be covered either a garage or a carport?
Generally it does, I'm not sure with the affordability exceptions that are already built into the code. It reduces- It reduces, it's tied to bedrooms.
One more, one more request, I think.
But there's, yet again, another potential request that if it were infeasible to have covered parking, that you could provide the numbers, but not necessarily in the form you would typically get them.
Right, and then I had one other question, and I know this, it's about this project, but it's about many of the projects that come to us and it's about parking. And I'm in agreement that we need to look at our parking code and it needs to be modified, studied and modified. But I'm also aware, if, that it looks like at the end of last month, the city council, well, it's a tentative hearing, five twenty-eight nineteen, pending item for city council, that the parking study report apparently is, is that in process?
It's being worked on, but it's not, it's not on a council agenda yet. It's possible it could go on June twenty-five.
Okay, and I'm just bringing it up because I know this, this is just ongoing, or it has been on numerous projects, including this one. And then I will say that the planning commission, I believe it was like, God, sometime in the last year and a half, two years, we actually brought up, and we have a list right here in our packet, that we felt the parking and the parking in Lufy needed to be looked at, studied and probably modified. So I'm just kind of pointing that out, that I would hope all this is happening or going to be happening soon because, once again, I think it would help on projects like this for us to have updated code, if possible. I mean, that's not going to happen overnight, but it feels like it needs to be addressed.
I, I would agree as we're seeing the affordable housing
Right.
conceptual plans coming, you're never going to have an affordable housing project meet
Right.
the basic, it's never going to happen.
Right.
And I don't even know if they're realistic, the amount of, like, I think when we talked about the Franklin project, that was five units, it would have needed twelve to thirteen spaces.
Mm-hmm, right.
Even as a non-affordable, that's a lot of parking.
Yeah, it is.
You know, for, for small units, that's a lot of parking. And when you've put in a deed-restricted affordable project, it's not even feasible.
I agree.
So I would agree that a parking study and a revision to the parking code are probably both needed.
Yeah, sooner than later.
Okay, questions?
So is the parking, the, is the parking study a comprehensive, a comprehensive look at the parking, entire parking code, or is it downtown parking?
I don't want to be premature because I don't think the scope is entirely nailed down. I think it's more of a focus on the downtown area, kind of the problematic areas that keep coming up with how to solve parking.
This is the downtown area.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, more questions for staff or should we begin deliberations? Okay, your thoughts, Commissioner?
Can I have, I have one, I do have one question.
Good.
Yeah, I, I am concerned about the substation. Thanks for bringing it up, but, but I, I don't have any, I haven't done any looking into that, I don't have any, I haven't talked to anybody who might know stuff, something about the, you know, there are impacts associated with the generating station, the, those kinds of facilities. Do you, do you have anything to comment on, off the top of your head on that?
Other than the project would have to go through a CEQA review, and this is not exempt. So I think that's why I didn't dwell on it more in the staff report, other than to point out it's located next to a substation. So clearly, it's an issue where that's, that's one of those abrupt transitions in land use, especially residential to something that's very industrial in nature. So that would certainly get looked at, whether it's handled through setbacks or whatever. We would be relying on a report to give us guidance on how to handle that.
There, there are single-family homes on Fox that back up to the east end of the substation. And there are homes, of course, across Willow
Yes, that hilarious residential.
that are closer to the substation than the units in this project that would be right along Montgomery. So I don't know what, what the effect might be there.
Exactly.
Okay, Bobby, you want to start?
Sure. I like the concept of this project. I think it's really important for the city that we do develop some rental units. I think there are more and more people who can afford to buy a house or who don't want to afford to buy. It used to be that that was the gold standard. You buy a house and it's your, it's your investment for the future. And that isn't necessarily true anymore. And people have taken a very different look at that. And I think we do have far too few rental units and it would be important to have them. I think we do need affordable housing. I've been a champion of three-story affordable housing, although I know it's not a favored position in this town. But as I thought about this particular parcel and thought about all the small-scale houses that are in this neighborhood, that coupled with the density of Los Arbores project that's already there and the density of that whole area, I thought that perhaps that is a nice use of this parcel to have smaller cottages set out on this parcel. I think they're in keeping with the neighborhood. I think that they would help it to feel less like a intense development. I, I did, I was concerned with the substation when I looked at the parcel. And despite the fact that there's so many trees, you know, it is quite visible on that side. The power equipment does seem to be pushed to the center of the lot and there is a, and I don't know if it will expand at some point, but there is a decent amount of space between that and the lot line. But I did wonder if perhaps instead of scattering the parking around, that some of it could be pushed to that boundary to kind of make a, a division between the substation and the residential units. And if perhaps that might be a way to look at the site and to mitigate that a little bit. And again, I, I think that citywide plan for parking is really an important thing that needs to be done. It comes up on every single project. I do feel like if we want to change the tone of our town, that we have to really embrace that and, and look at the projects in that light. I would hope that a site like the bowling alley would be the place for a three-story low-income development rather than this one where it's right in the heart of town and very dense. And I am in favor of this project. I think it has a lot of potential, I think we need it, and I'm heartened by it.
Kathy?
I'm also, excuse me, my mic on there. Generally in favor of the project, I'm in favor of, of more housing. I'm also requesting, and I'm not sure if you, the applicant, would want to do this, but almost come back for what I would call a little more detailed concept review. And I know tonight, you know, you wanted to have ideas and, you know, is this viable? And I guess, you know, a CEQA, they're probably going to require a traffic study. The same thing with the environmental, meaning the substation, which I too had a concern about. I think the, the architecture does fit in with the neighborhood. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to have a little more information on, and I know at this, you're still figuring this out, if they're going to be prefab, what are they made of and what have you? And then one of the members of the public got up and spoke about, he was concerned about the stormwater and all the hardscape. I would encourage you to do, look at permeable hardscape materials and
Didn't notice any catch basins or bio swales anymore.
Well, it's two, I think they were, they're, it's very schematic at this point. They, I don't believe got to that level of detail. But it would be nice to see you come back with that information, whether you decide to do another concept review or if it's for your design review permit. But, you know, it seems like the city's willing to work with you on the housing and the overlay. And I think that's, you know, definitely got to get dialed in. But, yeah, I would just like to see more information, but generally, I'm in favor. I know you have some challenges.
Commissioner Lottis.
Well, I'm of kind of two minds, I guess. You know, as, the, the layout is cute and the units are cute. And it, it does have a woodsy feel and, I mean, I like the fact that you'd be saving the trees on the property and so forth. And that would help everything blend in very nicely. But I have a lot of concerns. I think the units are very small with, with a very high price range on a rental. And, and I, I very firmly am in the camp of, when we're talking about affordable housing, the rental unit is by far the better way to go. I do, I do, that's where I sit. So, so I'm not sure if we're, if the city is getting enough with this project. And then on top of it, we have to bear the burden of the parking overflow. And I am very concerned about that. I mean, the prices on the, the market units, sorry, even, I mean, another quantum leap of amazement. So I, I don't know, I just feel like we're getting high, we're, we're looking at a pretty high rent for a very small, an extra-small unit. And we're getting a lot of parking impacts out of it. And I am concerned about the, the substation as a neighbor. Design-wise and aesthetic-wise, it's, you're probably, I think you can probably figure things out that are going to fit and be aesthetically pleasing and hopefully forward-thinking in terms of having a small footprint and that kind of thing. So, and I, and I, oh, I guess I already said, I appreciate keeping the existing trees in place. So I, I can't say that I'm exactly in support of this project at this time. Just because I, I feel that in approving this, there's a lot of burden on, the, the city is just accepting a lot for, I'm not sure if it's good enough. So, thank you.
Okay. I, well, I'm not sure where you stand at this point, but I'm used to being the one trying to hold back the tide. I like the design of these units. I think they are awfully small. The workforce in this, in this city, I would think, people that, that are in hospitality or they're in retail or they're in landscaping and gardening or they're in house cleaning or whatever, I suspect that they're all going to outgrow a one or two-bedroom unit of the sizes that we're talking about. So I'm not sure that there's a market for it. That said, they're nice-looking units. I don't think this is the right place for them. We have an acre and a half or thereabouts out at twelve oh two East Ojai Avenue, the old bowling alley property, that could easily take all of these units. It already has an SPL overlay on it. So that's not, that's not even something you have to ask for then. And the traffic out at the east end is nowhere near what the traffic is along South Montgomery right now. It also occurs to me, we're talking, the biggest, I think the biggest problem we have here is overnight parking, where people have come home from work and they only have one parking space. I have not yet heard anything that gives me a warm feeling about anyone, either the developer or the city enforcing any rules about one vehicle per unit. I, and this is not something that the community development director or the planning department or the building department have anything to do with. But I have to say, I have, I have no confidence that if that was part of a deed, that the city would enforce it. And so I would see that we, that we, if we recommended approval of this project, would basically be saying, okay, there's twenty-five or thirty more cars that we're allowing to park somewhere in that neighborhood. And I think that's a bad idea. If I, if, if it were my decision, and I don't want to get too deeply into this, if it were my decision to buy or not buy the property next week, based on being able to put twenty-five or thirty units on it, I wouldn't take that risk. But I'm a rather conservative person financially, so that's obviously still up to the applicant. I think there, there is a badly, exagger, no, not badly exaggerated, there is a bad need for affordable housing in this town. The people that I know that are in lower-income groups that work for me or work for others tend to live in Miners Oaks or Miramonte or farther away than that, Santa Paula even. And so if we could find more affordable housing in this town, that would be a good thing. But I don't think we can do it at the cost of doubling the amount of parking that doesn't exist in a neighborhood that's already badly strained by, by parking. It also occurs to me that just at our last meeting, I think it was our last meeting, we had the fellow who wanted to put a hotel in between the Arch Center and Los Arbores. And he said, he recognized he had five, he, he was required to have forty spaces, forty parking spaces. And he could only fit five onto that parcel. And so we said, okay, then you must provide thirty-five more spaces somewhere else. If you, if, if this project included more land somewhere else that had another twenty-five or thirty parking spaces on it that was sufficiently close that, that anyone who rented a unit in this project could park over there, wherever there is, and walk home or walk to the car in the morning to go to work, then we'd only have the traffic problem, we wouldn't have the parking problem. But between the two, and not even to mention the, the substation, the, the easternmost, then, then at least we would be down one problem. But I see several serious problems with this project the way it's currently proposed. As far as the units that are along the east edge of the property, they are considerably closer to the substation than either the single-family homes along Fox, because that's all their backyards backing up to the substation. The people that live along Willow or that live along the west side of Montgomery are farther away yet. And so I see, I see a potential health problem there. So overall, as I say, I like the design of the units, I think they're awfully small. I don't, I don't know that they're not too small for this community. But I think this is the wrong place to put the project. I think there are other places in town that would be equally suitable that would not have the parking or the traffic impacts that this project would have in this place. Yes, ma'am?
Well, I would like to say that I don't really see this project as a place where a family that has several children is going to live. But I do see this as a project where a young person might want to live or a couple might want to live, or even a couple with a young baby might want to live. I just spent a week looking at approximately eighty apartments in San Luis Obispo for my son to go to school next year. And if I could have found anything as nicely laid out as that for that price, I would have been overjoyed. But the reality of it is that But the reality of it is that the one-bedroom horrible decrepit units were wildly expensive. And, you know, we did rent him a place where the parking was tight, you know? We said, okay, when I come to visit you, how are we gonna do this? But it was the best space that we found.
I'll park at Vaughn's and you can come get me.
Well, the train goes right by us and I'll just hop off. And we'll make concessions, because it is hard to park there, we'll do it in a different way. I, I don't think that every housing project has to suit everybody. And I do think that, that since I've moved here in 2004, I see many more younger people who need someplace to live. There's plenty of them who have piles of money, who have no problem. But then there are those who don't. And I would like to encourage that kind of person to find a place to live here.
Kathy?
As we deliberate, um, so one thing that I did mention when I had my turn was that I would request that they come back with a second concept review. I felt like, I would almost call this like a pre-concept. In other words, there was a lot of information that wasn't provided. And I think there's the ambiguity. I, and I do realize there are, there are issues. There's the substation, there is the traffic, there's the parking, there's the overlay and meeting, the affordability, um, and what have you. That said, I, I do feel like we, a project could work there. I think when the applicant goes back and looks at, has the reports done, meets with you and finds out, okay, what is actually required for that, as the overlay, the project's probably gonna change and possibly tighten up, but knowing all those issues that are there. So, I mean, I just know, because I'm a landscape architect by trade, and when I start, you know, you're kind of out here, and then you find out, you know, all the findings and the opportunities and the constraints on a project, which I don't think were all, all looked at when this project came in. And then, you know, those start shaping, what's this really gonna look like? So, I would encourage you to come back with it, with more information. I mean, that's just my perspective. I think things will change, but I, I wouldn't shoot down the project now. I'm interested.
Is there any real information about these substations in terms of what the implication of them?
Electromagnetic field and emissions and what have you.
I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's field data that's available when a CEQA study is done.
I feel like it's like roundup, you know, that we've been told for years is good, although we know it's not. And, and it's like, who's paid for this study as terms of the information that we get?
Well, there's factual information that's available, I just don't.
Yeah, well, that would be, that would be really helpful, I think.
Educated about it, but I just feel that we're being asked to give up a lot, to give, to grant a 35% density bonus for some very, very small units and, at a very high price point in the rental. And for what they are, and, um, in addition, and with all these impacts, and I just, I, I'm very concerned about it. So, that, I just feel like the city's maybe asked to be giving too much for this. Maybe there's a way to, uh, find a design that doesn't, is farther away from the electromagnetic, you know, whatever impacts. And maybe there is a reduced density that would work, because then we'd end up with more parking on site. And maybe there's a way to partner with a nonprofit group that works on providing affordable housing so that we get a better, a better set of, um, of product. And so, that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Any others? I, uh, I can only reiterate, it's a nice design. I think it's the wrong place. I think that, that we do need housing. This would be a good place to put housing, but not this many in this crowded a portion of the city. So, is this, is this enough feedback for you, sir?
Yes, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. We're done? All right, then we'll go on to item four. A text amendment for development standards for fences, hedges, and walls. That was why everybody was here.
Yeah.
All right, welcome back to everyone. We took a short break there while the building emptied after the last item. And, uh, well.
He returned.
Old faithful.
He did leave.
Old faithful. All right, our next item is item four. Um, prospective text amendment for development standards for fences, hedges, and walls. And Luke, you have a staff report for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the commission. Uh, thank you, Mr. Miley, so I don't feel like I'm not talking to anyone except TV viewers. This is the third time before the planning commission on, on this issue, following up on a December and early February meeting, um, which I think a lot of progress was made, particularly at the December meeting, on this topic of fences, hedges, and walls. One thing that was raised at the February meeting was, was a reference to the Sargent Town Planning Document, which was a neighborhood planning effort that addressed fences, hedges, and walls, but also many other issues citywide. Many more than that, so.
Neighborhood character, for example.
Correct. I think it was even a precursor in many ways for where we're now going with the general plan update. It was laying the early work for that. For context, that was never completed, though a lot of good work was done. I know there were presentations and community outreach done as part of that. There was no adopted city neighborhood planning document, however, so it kind of remains in, in limbo. What I did, though, since that was referenced, and I think it is helpful and a lot of work was already done, was to just kind of run through, I'm not sure everybody saw this presentation. Uh, it's essentially edited down to highlight the, the fence, hedge, and wall issue. Mostly fences and walls, not so much hedges. And to also give them the neighborhood context, which is something that the zoning code lacks. The zoning code, the key issues that keep coming up in the code, and we have talked about on earlier meetings, are the required front setback of five feet, regardless of height, and the three-foot height limitation, regardless of whether it's a fence, hedge, or a wall, that is tied to, between your front property line and the location of your building. So, that's how the setback is determined for that. So, that, that's been problematic, I know, for some time. But I do want to get in, there's quite, there's quite a few slides, I'm gonna go through them quickly, we could certainly go back to them. But again, I just want to go, I think what was done here was helpful, since it's not just treating it a one-size-fits-all. Essentially, in height, it is. This is, this is not recommending anything above three or four feet. But it gives you better context, I think, of the city than what the zoning code does. So, let's get into, this started with looking at these, what they called observed character areas. And so, you, essentially, what you have on the slides we'll follow are tied to this map, where you're really breaking down, as you would enter Ojai from, say, the east or the west, you get into these gateways and semi-rural areas to a more suburban character, increasingly working towards the downtown with how design changes, and in turn, fences, hedges, and walls tied into that, that design. So, a lot of this looked more at materials and other things, as I said. But it's, it's something, I think, for a long-term goal of dealing with this issue, not the short term, of some of what you see here would be better solutions in the long run. So, again, we're looking at these green arrows as the rural gateways. As you go through the slides, these terms will appear as it addresses fences, hedges, and walls. So, you get into the design character of these gateways. So, you're looking at recommendations that were made at this time, where to keep fences, essentially a four-foot height limitation. Now, our code right now, and again, just dealing with the front setbacks, not your backyard or anything like that, has a three-foot limitation, so it's similar. In this, it was looking at the four-foot height, unless you had a more significant setback from the property lines.
I think they're open.
And they're open, very good point. Wood and open.
As opposed to being a solid wall.
Correct. And I think even more of the horizontal kind of emphasizes the lowness even more. So, those are the sort of characteristics, you know, a design firm is not just looking at the quantified in height and setback. Then again, as you move towards the center of the city, what are the functions? You want to screen parking lots with low walls, fences, you know? So, what, what's that doing? Mask them with plantings. So, we have a lot of examples, most of which are from in Ojai. Again, another role, what, what does a fence have, where we're mostly talking about it, defining a front yard. And I think this has become a big issue with the people wanting a low fence out to the property line, such as split rail fences, picket fences. Um, you probably can't walk up the street here between Ojai Avenue on Ventura or Blanch. There's, I think, like, two properties that actually meet the code. So, it, it's, it's very common to find things that don't meet the code. And we frequently have conversations with people about wanting to do things that are common that they cannot do. So, the issue of providing a landscape strip between the sidewalk and the fence, I think that would have been the intent for the current five-foot setback that we have. That's the only thing that makes sense with me.
A lot of people seem to have used that five-foot setback between the fence and the curb instead. And where there would be a sidewalk, there's that planting, and then the fence.
And, and from a design standpoint, it makes sense. You want to soften the fence, and particularly if it's a wall, that you would want to have landscaping out there. The downside is, a lot of times, you're dealing with single-family homes where you have less regulatory control. Is, does it become a dead space, people just don't maintain? That can often happen as well. It's, it's almost out of sight, out of mind, it's on the other side of your fence. So, again, this is moving towards the downtown area and how the nature and character of things change. Again, functions of the fence to screen parking lots. As I said earlier, in terms of looking at issues of height, which we've also talked about, I know we've included the Santa Barbara Design Guidelines in there, which allows, depending on going through a greater review process, you can have fences and hedges well in excess of this. I think we're even getting up to like 12 feet in some cases.
But setback further, 10 feet.
Setback further, design review. And, you know, another challenge I think we have in Ojai is you have sort of a director-level approval, and it's straight to planning commission. We don't have an interim hearing body here. So, some of these more complex processes, you'd have to think how they would fit. But the focus I saw with the Sargent Town Planning exercise, though, they're very consistent on a four-foot height. They do discuss options for if it's setback further in rural areas. But whether you're in a neighborhood or in downtown, they're consistently recommending a low fence height. You know, again, they're focusing a lot, too, on as you get into the downtown, moving away from wood, moving away from the split rail, focusing more on stucco or native stone, which you see a lot of throughout town. You know, again, wall's more appropriate than fences in this area, unlike the earlier slide showing a split rail fence in a more suburban residential area. Now, into the, really, the downtown core itself, you're departing where it's saying, buildings really should be the focus when you're at the sidewalk. Again, walls' primary function would be to screen parking lots. Here you have outside the Oaks, you see you've got a wall right up against the sidewalk there. So, there's, there's no setback from really the public right-of-way on that. Again, walls should be smooth-stone or stucco, you're not necessarily looking for a more residential or wooden type of fence in this area.
Where's that?
I am not.
Santa Barbara.
You say, that does not look like, if it's in town, I don't know it. And again, not all of these, there were a number of slides added out, I think we had a, as a, you won't see it in here, but as a Stanford man, I know we had the Cardinal Hotel on Hamilton Avenue in Palo Alto was originally in here. Hotel on Hamilton Avenue in Palo Alto was originally in here, so it wasn't confined exclusively to Ojai.
Representative.
Correct. I think he was trying to give good and occasionally some bad examples. Again, this is greatly edited, so.
Bad examples are a good thing sometimes.
They are, except the last time I did this presentation, somebody called, I had used a fence at their house, and they weren't happy. So that's not being shown tonight.
Maybe that's why they'd be better to do out of town.
That may be why. Again, I think they had a good point here, is while this is departing from our conversation at hand, is where you're really into the very core blocks of downtown, you really want the buildings to be prominent, not the fence, unless, say, maybe you're talking a rear of the arcade or something where it's a parking area. Again, it's repetitive, but you get a lot of examples of that, and you do see this around town where you have the low walls. It's a good way to screen cars. Again, four feet, you will not find anything recommending a fence or wall being higher than four feet in this presentation. Wow.
Where is that?
You know, signal, right before you get to the park, the public parking lot, isn't it?
Yeah. That's, yes. Yeah, because that's the oak tree up there, there used to be the two oak trees.
And Rainbow Bridge would be, you know.
Yeah, isn't that Wells Fargo in the background, up on the upper right? Yeah. So, yeah.
The Oaks is across with the other wall that you'll see.
So there we go. Large Sycamore. And again, here's some examples of Village McHughs area just off of the downtown core, where I think they were, they did a good job focusing on, you have either residential structures or structures that are converted, like the Lavender Inn, Sane Center, these things where they were generally craftsmen or that era of home that are now operating as businesses. And the interesting frontages you see as you walk along here, and again, one thing that strikes me is I keep thinking of the main issues that triggered this conversation with the five-foot setback requirement and the height, is how many of these things are all in violation of that? So much of what you see and like is not allowed, particularly with the five-foot setback.
Part of it may be that there's no requirement for a permit to put a fence in, you just put it in, and if it's contrary to the code, you discover that afterwards.
Yeah, generally, if you're under six feet, you're not.
It'd be pre-code, I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
A lot, particularly in the residential areas.
And I haven't looked back, you have, the majority of the code changed in 2004, and I'm assuming that pre-2004 was a code that more fit the development you see and like in Ojai? And the code that is now in effect, because essentially, more properties are non-conforming than conforming. That's not a good situation, and it's why I think people, we see a lot of confusion where people say, "Well, that's up and down my block, why can't I do it?"
I've been here for years, like.
Right. And I don't think, I see things like this, I don't think anyone reacts to that, saying we don't want it. But, you know, if you have to be setback five feet, I left this in, it had nothing to do with fences, hedges, and walls so much as a transformation of where they took the shot of looking at Rainbow Bridge in the parking lot, but it was a good example of how you could change that, doing a few simple things such as.
All on a city parking lot.
The pop-out of the tree into the street on the left to get street trees that are essentially in the street. The, you know, you've got decomposed granite versus, you know, the asphalt's gone, so where you go to decomposed granite, landscaping on the interior wall to soften that, the mural on the facade of the store, so. One reason I think this was a good study overall, and again, I tried to focus it on just fences, hedges, and walls, but they really looked at a bigger context for. Yeah, and I think something we're going to end up revisiting as part of the general plan anyway. And again, and I left a lot of pictures, and again, just the different styles of fences and walls, or a mix of the two, some are setback, some are not. Most of these, I would think, are positive examples. Again, village mixed use, you're trying to screen things, you're also trying to establish your property boundary. Another common issue that has come up with the wall in the front yard or fence is to make sure if you have children or pets, you don't want it so low that it's not keeping anything in. So you do have that functional standpoint, again, the four-foot reference, when you, you know, wood in the natural form, again, stucco and stone still appropriate as you're into the area framing the downtown. You know, this is a fence, probably an example of one that's perfect that would meet our current code.
Yeah, with the setback.
Because you've got the five-foot setback, landscaped, and you have a low fence. You move that fence out to the sidewalk, doesn't comply. You make it taller, it wouldn't comply. Another example there, where you're mixing stone and the fence, that would probably work under the current code. I think this was put in on Matilah, I think, just as an interesting example of the wall actually.
Yeah, it is Montgomery.
Is it, oh, you're right, I'm sorry, Los Arbolas?
No.
Where is that?
North Montgomery, north Montgomery, right, yeah.
Correct, yeah, it's near the city's affordable housing site.
Yes.
Across the street from it. Right. This is similar on Matilah, similar where you work around a pepper tree as well.
Yes.
But I thought that was a good example they focused on too, where the wall is not straight, it actually is integrated into the architecture of the building, the sidewalk deviated around the tree, you've got the drought-tolerant landscaping, so pretty creative solution. You know, here's another one, a fence that probably doesn't offend anybody, but if it came in for a permit today, we'd say it doesn't meet code because it's at the property line. More examples there, open fence, solid wood fence, both low, neither would comply with the code as written today. Same example here, presumably the hydrangea could be considered a hedge, though we don't define that, and I hope we don't want to spend a lot of time defining it either.
Never have. It's a snake bit.
Yes, so. Okay, so get into outside of the downtown, the Arbola, where you actually have a different character. Again, I think a lot of their recommendations here, interestingly, in their planning exercise, they even brought the recommended fence height down from four to three feet, but they also tied it to whether it was 30 or 40 feet from the right-of-way. So presumably, if you had a large lot and were setback further, height becomes less of an issue. And I think many of these lots here, you really aren't going to see something that far back, it's a heavily landscaped area. And they started addressing issues too about transparency, would you treat a fence that is largely open differently from something that's solid? Completely appropriate consideration, where you've got streets where you don't really have houses fronting them, how is that going to work if the intent is really, in neighborhoods in town, the intent seems to be where you want to be able to see doors, the front porch, you don't want the fence to be the main feature. Where you have neighborhoods though, such as the Arbola, where a lot of times you can't really see the house all that well. You know, you're not going to see it whether there's a fence there or not. Again, I'll try to move through this quickly. This I had in an earlier presentation too, because I think it's a really good example of because the fence is closer to the sidewalk than the facade of the house, and the height of the fence exceeds three feet, you would not be able to do that under the existing code, even though it screens less than half of the house. And I think most people would agree is tied in pretty well with the mid-century building. These are probably, you know, all the more reason why I don't think we can answer that specifically tonight, because this is more of a design issue, not, I can't say there's a number, like a height and a setback is not going to solve that, but do you want to have a code so rigidly written, you either can't do that or you have to try to find a reason to apply for a variance? Which is, a variance should not be a solution for that, so. But I, that was, I'm not sure where that house is, but it was a good example of you still have an open view to the house and you have a degree of privacy.
I've walked every street in Ojai and I don't remember that house.
Maybe in the Crespi neighborhood, but maybe a little, there's a couple.
No. The trees in the background too don't look like here. I don't see any palms, I don't even see oaks. So it's probably a different aerial.
Seattle.
Absolutely. So again, now this was focusing on a neighborhood suburban, again, you're getting more horizontal open fences, recommended height is three feet. Again, has it tied to a setback, presumably leaving the door open, that if, the further the fence is from the sidewalk, the greater, you know, that you'd have to go up. And again, that may be something where we're having to look at establishing a residential design guideline, we have commercial design guidelines, and maybe having a hearing process that we don't currently have to say, if you want greater than this in height, then you need to go through this process. That's probably the long-term solution.
But Santa Barbara has, I mean, I think there was.
Yes.
Three and a half feet tall, but once you got to the 10 feet, you could, you could actually.
Right. I believe, and I don't, I believe they have a residential hearing body, then they have the design review board, you actually had these tiers with.
Right, and the county center has the two, like they have the Board of Architectural Review before the district and the county.
Okay.
And basically, you submit to planning, but then when it comes to more like the aesthetics, you go to the BAR, and things like this would get.
Right.
Right.
Lighting, you know, colors, architecture.
Yeah, because I definitely understand the intent when I look at the neighborhoods in town, is it's traditional town planning. At the same time, then I'll see some larger ranch homes, never oriented towards the street, set further back, that where no one ever had in, they're all about privacy. So that's the difficulty of the one-size-fits-all. Again, even presumably this one, if that's a side yard fence that's in the front yard in front of the house, you wouldn't be able to do that. Okay. Just another examples of types of fences that you could have. Again, I think as we move now further out to the fringe of the city, again, they focused on just trying to maintain that open look, greater setbacks, again, low walls, low fences. Then we got in sort of the question, what we've wrestled with in the staff reports, and that is where we do have people that want to go six feet, seven feet, whatever it is, and you align somewhere above what would normally be allowed, are you going to have a difference between something that's a solid wall versus open? It makes sense, because it does give a completely different look, even if it has greater height, the transparency is not as obtrusive. And clearly, there's many different styles you could have to tackle that. And again, if people are landscaping and maintaining it, would that mitigate in favor of a higher wall? There's that photo again, I think we used this in the last presentation as well. So just more examples. And I believe we're winding down here as we get back to the rural areas. And again, I think the recommendations are kind of self-evident, low walls, large setbacks, kind of maintaining the character, which I think then really defines Ojai as you come in, you get that sense of you're going somewhere as you go from the rural to the urban. Another example of an open fence with landscaping. And we're now at discussion, so I saved you what was probably originally like an hour and a half worth of slides, but I thought it was worth revisiting just, because not all of you had seen it, and again, it's probably worth revisiting beyond just this issue of fences, hedges, and walls. So I'll go sit down.
Questions for staff? I have a few, if no one else does. Okay, I'm looking at the second page of the staff report, and I noticed in, under public safety, and I'm hoping we can at least dispose of that tonight, but your citation of 10-2803, 10-2803E at least, refers to proposed development on or after the effective dates of the two ordinances that are cited in the code. Ordinance 771 in 2004 and 855 in 2015. And we don't have the city attorney here tonight, but I'm wondering if that means that anything that existed before at least the 2004 is something that we can't touch unless we change the code?
Well, that would be the case with things, is when you had something, if it were built with a permit legally, or in the case of something sold, it predated even permit requirements, you're generally protected to maintain it as is. You're not going to be able to expand it or allow it to get more non-conforming than that. But I think, yeah, the intent, and I know we, there were two resolutions I cited in here in 2015 as well, that looked at this issue, I think where we're, where somebody could demonstrate they had, if it's a fence or a wall or something constructed legally and appropriately at that time, that could be more problematic. I think the bigger issue with safety, though, often, is landscaping that's overgrown.
I was just writing.
You know, that, it's probably, you're going to have some structural things, I think, for sure, that are issues, but it's often, the landscaping that's unmaintained is going to be the visual problem, by far the majority of the time.
It's the problem oftentimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
That's when you have experience with complete streets, walking the streets.
Right.
And I know February, I was on the phone for that meeting, I know Commissioner Nolan, you had brought that up exactly, of walking down Ojai Avenue. The obstruction and the visibility are both, I think, that was very apparent to me at the three-hour discussion, is while we didn't vote on particular issues, there was very strong consensus of like, safety's kind of self-evident, why aren't we, and it's more of an enforcement issue, you know? Yeah, these sorts of presentations, it's really, you have this design aesthetic character of Ojai issue, and then you have safety issues. And it seemed like there was pretty clear consensus about where we have these intersections or these problematic areas, can we correct that? And I think the fact that most of them are landscaping related, that's not grandfathered. You know, that's a case of maintenance, whether it's a tree that's hanging too low, or shrubs that are growing up or planted where they shouldn't be, that's going to be more a case of enforcing and correcting the action. So I don't know if there's ever been anything like a, say, a list assembled or something where you start compiling locations and then they're verified?
We do, we actually have done some of that in complete streets, and I mean, I suppose I could put it together, but one thing I want to make a comment of, and this is about the hedges at an intersection that are over, say, you know, they should be at three right now according to code, and then, you know, they're 10, 12 feet tall, and then you have a blind intersection. And some of them have been there for years, and I know people aren't going to want to cut them down. A possible solution is, is you do the cantilevered stop sign at those intersections. Now, that costs more money because you have to, I guess the city would have to front it.
We had one at the corner of, that corner of the Oaks, when there was still an oak tree there.
Right. But I, you know, maybe that's, we come up with a list, in other words, and you had mentioned this earlier, general guidelines for residential and commercial. And some of those items are listed out. We, I don't know, because you brought this up, Steve, at the item we had earlier tonight, the toughest thing is the enforcement, I mean, sometimes things happen, but it's not consistent, and hasn't been consistent over the years for many different things.
It's reasonably consistent that the rules aren't enforced.
Right. And I'm not pointing the finger at anyone, we're saying it's his fault, it's more.
Certainly not the.
You know, having the, having the appropriate, or, you know, enough staff to even do it. Or maybe there's a moratorium for a while, or whatever the reason, it's not about pointing fingers, it's more, what's realistic? I think needs to get thrown into the mix. So that's why I brought in, oh, the cantilevered stop sign for situations like that.
I mean, it seems like if there's a way to tame the landscape without lopping it down and to make it safer, that that's the right approach.
Right. So for instance, Commissioner.
I mean, maybe the hedges, you know, as long as they're, they're back or they're, you know.
So I think there's like.
You'll speak?
Oh, yeah, we should let him speak. But I'll just make, I'll just say one thing, I think when we're doing this, the hedges could remain part of this topic, but they almost need to be addressed individually from the fences and walls, because they're growing and they're changing and you can cut them down, and you know, there's so many variables, but you know, a wall's a wall, and most likely someone's not going to add to it, they could, but you know? The fences and the walls are fixed, the hedges are actually like green walls that can expand, that change. And so I think there needs to be some separate criteria for them. And then, you know, we're looking at new projects that come in, and here are the guidelines or the code, and then there's the ongoing enforcement for existing, and how you do it. So I think, and you mentioned that in the report, that there's two, you know, there are two areas we have to address, there's new projects and there's what's already here.
Right. And I think the problem that cropped up a few years ago with the hedges, when they went around telling everybody they had to cut all their hedges down, is sort of the same thing Claude brought up tonight, where it needs to be an interface, you need to work with people to come up with a solution to make it palatable for both sides and not adversarial. to make it palatable for both sides and not adversarial where, you know, take it down and apply for a permit. Well, there isn't easy solution for solving that problem.
There it is.
Let's talk about how to do it, this is, if you do this, then they're fine. You know, put the shades up, whatever, you know, if you're willing to do that, then, then that is compliant. And I think that, that we need to approach how we address these issues in that way so that we're working as team with the city and the residents.
Right. Yeah, it's not like we're just, you know, out here forcing people to do things. Well, anyway.
Let me just say one thing before I know, Mr. Miley speak is.
Request?
Coming up very shortly, can I make my presentation so I?
Yes. I think so.
Well, we can, we can suspend questions for staff and have the public comment if no one objects.
Luke, you had the floor, are you?
It was just very brief on, on the hedge issue, I think there's two things, where a hedge is a safety issue, blocking vision at an intersection, that's one thing. When you're telling people to cut down hedges for an aesthetic reason, where it's, it just, I wanna see your front porch and your hedge is six feet. That's a totally separate issue. And that, that's, I think where things get off.
And then it also gets into the general plan. Where it talks about the character of this walkable neighborly, you know, talking over the fence character, which.
It's a myth.
Yeah, well, anyway.
Okay.
Maybe forty years ago it was like.
Good evening, my name is Bill Miley for the record. I have a comment about Montecito. As I remember when you drive through Montecito, you can't see anything because there's a wall and, there's walls and hedges and large fences that are really high.
Not accidentally.
No, it's all intentional. So at the top of Signal Street, there's been a house there now for about maybe thirty, forty years. And most recent owners, they don't have a fence, but they planted bushes that are now about nine feet tall. And you can't see anything, you can't even see the valley beyond it. So there must be something that we ought to look at from the standpoint of, I'm not gonna build a fence that's six foot tall in front of my house 'cause I can't. But I'm sure gonna buil, plant bushes that will create a fence that you'll never see my house. Anyway, that's really not what I came to talk about. Hello. I strongly support this section in your administrative report on walls, fences and hedges for establishing a requirement to register your intent to build a fence. Fence, no cost or little cost. There's no recommendation in there, um, the planning director just described it. And I think we've talked, I've talked to you about this before. This prerequisite will prevent having owners, quote owners, building out of code structures like six foot fences in the front of their house. And two of them did that on Grand Avenue and Park, that area. And the code enforcement person had them take it all down and do it right. And then at the corner of um, Shady Lane, there was another one who was building it out, I watched them, they were putting the posts in. And they were gonna be six foot in the front, six foot on the side. Called up Sherry and Sherry got the code enforcement officer and bang, they stopped it and they built it right recently. It's been about seven months ago. We had a disastrous affair happen at the top of North Signal Street. A new owner in a twelve acre, ten acre parcel. The contractor came down to the planning desk and said to Sherry, I wanna build a fence. Sherry says, we don't have any requirement, there's nothing, you know, just build your fence. And he went back and built a six foot block wall that was two hundred feet long with a foundation because it was a retaining wall. And that was a really mess and if he had done, been done, if he had not said what he said and said what he was gonna do, we might've had a rock wall there which looked great. And now we have, anyway, so. It will be educational in nature if we develop it and it will prevent the need for code enforcement efforts going after people who do it wrong either intentionally or unintentionally, so. Requirement that people register build a fence doesn't cost them much, but they just tell the planning department what they're gonna do. And then we tell them what they can do. I'm really big.
Thank you.
I like everything you're doing, this is really wonderful, thanks.
I would, I would second that emotion. That there be a mandatory visit to the desk when you're gonna build a fence, no matter where the fence is, no matter how high you think you wanna build it.
Even a, and a garden wall too?
Define garden wall.
Well, garden wall is freeze in, it's not retaining any soil. So if somebody wants to just put a wall instead of a, say a C N U or a concrete, or this concrete wall.
Yeah.
Instead of a fence, what they have to come into?
Yeah, and the front yard setback? I would say yes.
I mean, if we're gonna do it with a fence, we should.
Right, yeah.
I mean, if it's in their backyard somewhere.
I think we should treat fences and walls the same. I do think that we, we might treat open style fences differently from solid fences and walls. And maybe set a standard like fifty percent open space or sixty percent open space or something like that. Because the visual is so different.
Right, I agree.
Well, are we gonna talk about safety first or not?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was, I was in the midst of some questions.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Section ten two, article eight talks about all of this stuff. But ten two eight oh three is silent on whether or not uh, fence, wall and hedge at an intersection, and this is one of those that we've talked about. Come back twenty-five feet, I'm not sure from where, each direction and then cut the corner off. But ten two eight oh three is silent about whether you're measuring that three foot height from grade or from the road. And those are typically different.
Could be six inches.
At, at least, at least six inches higher, in my neighborhood, there's one that's three feet higher. And elsewhere in my neighborhood, there's one that's six feet lower. Well, ten two eight oh four D one cites fence and wall height above grade. But that's a different part of the code. And so I think we need to, we need to figure that out, particularly at intersections. I think it's important that the height for public safety reasons, for sightline reasons, be measured from the roadway.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Because there's too much, too many variables on what that height could be based on.
Yeah, if you're coming down a hill, you know, we've seen these pictures in the code where you've got stair stepped houses and such. If you get down to the bottom of the hill and you're, and the, the last house is in that big stair step, then, then uh, even the dirt could be a sightline problem.
Why, are you, are you talking about edge of pavement? What kind of, well, not crown, not crown of the street, right?
No, I, well. Well, from wherever the car is, but that's usually right around the crown of the street.
Yeah, but I mean.
But some streets are crowned and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I just, I.
And, and there's probably not more than six inches difference between the crown and the edge, most of the time. But.
Well, you could say the center of the road.
Yeah.
You can say the center of the road.
I think the center of the road would be fairly safe.
Yeah.
Well, that is, that's typically the crown, but yeah.
But, and you're gonna get a little bit of variability there, but I think that's probably the safest. Most close to being stable.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that's a really good point. Especially in the commercial, well, in residential, but definitely for the corners.
A little farther down that same page, talks about the resolution adopted by the city council in two thousand fifteen. Gave the public works director the ability to determine whether a particular encroachment poses a safety hazard. Now, I'm not sure what we're talking about there, are we talking about fences, hedges and walls still? Because I'm, I'm wondering if the public works director has ever made any findings about anything being a safety hazard.
That I don't know, but I know that resolution identify the public works director.
Yeah. I, I, I have to compliment you on this staff report, it's, it's comprehensive and it's clear. I mean, it generates a lot of questions, but what you've written is clear.
It does, and like I said, I'm, I don't think we can answer, some of the scope of this is long term and down the road, it's, it's processes we don't have, it's guidelines we don't have, but the fact, I know this was generated by the city council with some specific, when, well, when they considered this in October, they had even voted to get rid of the five foot setback at their October meeting in the front yard.
They had or had not?
They did, that, that was one of the, yeah, they wanted it to go back to the planning commission, but that night there was consensus among the council members to say, let's get rid of the five foot setback, so. I know that's one of the code changes, I think that's, they're wanting to get done. But, you know, again, we had other issues about the, should the overall height be three feet, should it be four feet, I mean those quantifiable things, again, just trying to focus, it's mostly residential, it's entirely front yard, the interface with public and private. Those are things I think, and when I think back to the December meeting, like when we were talking about hedges, I think outside of where we had a safety issue, there didn't seem to be the feeling that we should treat hedges the same as fences and walls if it's just in your front yard. That was how I remembered that discussion going, that.
That was the consensus, I've since changed my, my opinion of the consensus, but, but.
But, but it's.
Safety. I mean, we already have a process, we have a process to deal with safety hazards.
Right.
So.
I think it's an enforcement question.
That process, I mean.
It's largely an enforcement question, but.
I put a check next to mine too, I went, hey, that works if it gets enforced.
But there also could be alternatives, as we talked about when we were up at Franklin to Montgomery today.
Yeah.
One answer could be putting a small roundabout at that, at that T intersection. Another could be putting a three way stop there. And that, and that eliminates the problem of, I know there's, there's one residential intersection. It's either along Oak or along Eucalyptus, and I think it's west of Signal somewhere. Where there is a there's a corner house and right along both property lines, I, I presume it's the property line, it's awfully close to the pavement. So it may even be in the public right away, there's a nine foot tall hedge. And, and it is not a four way stop there. So you could, you could clearly have auto accidents because people just don't see the other traffic. But if you put a four way stop in there.
With a cantilevered stop.
With a cantilevered stop sign or whatever, yeah. Then th- th- that could be an alternative to making people cut back hedges on corners.
Right, I don't, I, I mean, I don't want a heavy hand on, on this determination, I don't want
Yeah.
Like, uh, Corbin said, yeah, no vigilantes. We love our vegetation, but um.
And that hedge is beautiful.
Well, that's why.
That nine foot hedge I was talking about, yeah, it's a beautiful hedge, it just makes for an unsafe intersection.
But I, I, I mean, you can't, I don't think you can write all of that into the, this process, I mean, the process is, is fine as long as there is a, a, a good judgment, a consideration of alternatives. And um, you know, if, if living vegetation is involved, consideration of, of just proper pruning or trimming.
Yeah.
Rather than just removal, you know, so I that, yeah, I, so I guess that's the weak spot of uh, of the way it is, is.
Hedge question?
Sure.
Uh, you know, I understand the twenty-five feet in either direction, but what about the setback? If the hedge is ten feet back, then do you have visibility no matter what height it is?
So I had made some notes on that myself. So, you know, based on our presentation that we had just had and we saw a, kind of a really nice cross section of different options, some of them happened to be in Ojai, we know we've got a variety of things, some of them grandfathered in. And we did say the, the big variable is the hedge. I think that the hedge is one item that does need to have say the five foot setback. Because.
I agree, I totally agree with that.
For instance, Steve and I will concur on this, we, you know, we, we walk, we've been doing this, uh, first of all, we did all this walkability data, we've been doing the safe sidewalks data, we've been walking around with a woman who was side impaired. And just ourselves, and there are so many places that you walk down, where you literally have to go walk it into the street off of the sidewalk because there's like things growing over and the sidewalk is now only like a foot wide in addition to mailboxes and other stuff being in the way.
Backside of the Oaks is a good example of that, and they even trimmed it lately. And it's still, you've got half a sidewalk.
So to me, that would be the, the exception to say you would, if you have a hedge, you would have the five foot setback. The walls and the fences with guidelines could be right at the street and we do have that existing. But then I think, and I, I'm, you know, we may wanna play with this a little bit, I know Santa Barbara has this. Where they have that ten foot setback, setback where you can have a taller hedge or a taller wall.
Right, that makes sense.
And then, and that makes sense whether it's just a screen or you're completely, you know, closed in, however you wanted to do it. But I think, um, yeah, we love our vegetation, you know, I don't wanna go around doing, but at the same time, there definitely are safety issues throughout town.
Well, there's a lot of areas where the hedges were planted too close to the walkway or the sidewalk.
And that's why I'm thinking the five foot setback.
I mean, even outside the, the, the triangular area of the, of the corners, but.
I, I agree, I've kind of given some thought to the setback too where I think that.
Hedges need to be five feet back and then.
That if it, if it, if it you know, if you wanna be that close, then it has to be low, if you're gonna set it back, then you have more flexibility.
Right.
Um, yeah, so, well.
But back to safety.
Also in the staff report here is this other Luke mentioned two resolutions by the city council. The second one fifteen dash forty-three suspended enforcement of height standard violations that exist, for wall, fences, walls and hedges that existed as of October twenty fifteen. Now, as slowly as this town develops saying anything after October twenty fifteen is a vanishingly small amount of the problem.
So, you know, we have two things, and I was looking at this. We almost need to look at existing and then if there are any changes for new projects coming in. Of course, the existing right now is the big, is the bigger issue, but you, I, we can't, I don't think we can lump it together.
I don't wanna go after existing stuff unless it's a safety hazard, I really don't, I mean, that's just like.
And if it's a safety hazard cutting down the, the vegetation in that twenty-five foot triangle is not necessarily the only way to achieve public safety.
Right, so there could be some, there could be options, like we said, you could cut it back, you could, you know. And we'd have to figure that out.
But it might be the first thing, I think, is like with the intersections, and I don't know the best way to get it, is to really start getting, where are these locations? Like getting that list together, where, where are the problematic locations, and then assessing, okay, is this in fact a problem? What are the solutions? Cause like you said, before you go out and just say, hey, we're gonna chainsaw this thing down.
No, we don't want.
Maybe there's something else you could do.
But we don't wanna put four oh two North Ventura in the municipal code either.
No, and I, I, that's more than anything is why the code is not gonna solve all these problems, you, you need processes, you probably need guidelines that you know, somebody's gonna be able to build a six foot fence, if people are gonna say, that looks great, and somebody could build a three foot wall that looks terrible. And that's the problem.
You need the design guidelines for those.
You, you do, I mean, like, treating a split rail fence the same as a masonry wall.
It's easy to be accurate.
One, one comment I had too is interestingly on the the hedge comment about saying the hedge should be setback five feet, is right now the hedge is not subject to the setback, only the height. Fences and walls are.
You're just asking for a problem.
So fences and walls have a five foot setback. So fences and walls have a five-foot setback and a three-foot height limitation. Hedges, which is, hedges you can have at the property line.
Right.
Which of course you are asking for a problem, because if it's planted at the property line, it's going to grow into the right-of-way.
And they are the one thing that are causing a problem.
And there's no height restriction.
There is a height, the height restriction is the same.
On a hedge?
On a hedge. If it's in the front setback, it is three feet for everything.
But there's no setback for the hedge right now?
Correct, just fences and walls, so...
I set mine back anyway.
Right, if, if you had a three-foot trimmed hedge, right at the property line, you're perfectly fine.
Yeah, you need the setback for the hedge, because it's just...
Yeah.
Right.
Fills it out.
That, that's not subject, that's the one area that the hedge is treated differently from fences and walls, is the setback.
You got a work cut out for us.
Yeah.
It's treated differently because the hedge has to be setback and the fence and wall don't.
No, fences and walls do, hedges do not, so the...
We need to, I think we need to change that.
Yeah.
Right.
So that would be for new projects.
And then if it's five feet back, I mean, we could discuss maximum height, but I, I don't think I have an issue with height back at that point.
I don't have a problem with four feet.
I think setbacks are actually more important than height.
The other, the other issue, we were talking about safety, well, first of all, there's the intersections, the corner sightlines. The other one is the driveways, and that's part of the reason why Santa Barbara has that 10-foot setback with taller hedges and walls, because now you're eliminating that problem. So like, if you're walking down a sidewalk, or even if you're on a bike or in a car, and the hedges are 10 feet tall or the wall's 10 feet tall and it's right, you know, where the sidewalk is, you can't see if somebody's backing out.
Backing out of a driveway.
Nor can the person backing out see if anyone is out there.
With electric vehicles, it gets to be more of a problem because they don't make much noise.
So it goes both ways. So I, to me, those, those are the two, well, there's three safety things. There's the corner, the intersection, line of sight, then there's the driveway, and then of course then with the hedges, there's just, you know, non-maintenance or a maintenance issue. Those are, I think, the three main...
The, the 25-foot along each, along each street, when cutting off the corner, uh, is, is in the code now, there's a picture in the code.
Yep.
If you have something that's 10 feet back and very tall, that's in that sightline.
Right.
So...
And that, that diagramma does apply to driveways, right?
It's intersections.
The illustration in the code is only for corners.
Yeah, Commissioner Nolan's right, it's Santa Barbara and that was in, they have the driveway.
We could add a drawing for the driveways.
Right, that would be, like, and I think that's what is, tonight, if there's things that there's consensus to recommend to council like that, add something similar. We don't have the exact specs, but we should address the driveway issue.
Right.
Um, I've noticed that more just with the proliferation of hybrids and electric vehicles.
Yeah.
You often don't even hear them.
Right.
Now, so something I used to rely on, as somebody who ran in the street a lot.
You might just keep walking and not stop because you don't hear anything.
You don't hear them very well, so if there's any ambient noise, you don't hear them at all.
Huh.
Mm-hmm.
Interesting.
Um, well, so...
Yeah, for instance, yeah, here's a, a Santa Barbara. When a driveway directly butts a portion of a street without a sidewalk or a parkway, the triangle is measured on two sides by a distance of 20 feet from the side of a driveway and 10 feet back from the front lot line. I had a project in Santa Barbara where I had this exact same situation that I had a design for.
Well, do we have, do we have some consensus on public safety issues?
I think so.
Um, I think for, for new development, this setback 25 feet and cut off the corner is, is a reasonable thing to ask of a new development.
And it's in the code already.
And it's in the code already.
Yes, existing.
So I would, I would recommend leaving that.
Check, yes.
But where, where it is a public safety issue, then either we have to clear that triangle, or we have to do something like put stop signs in to keep, to keep people going two directions in the blind, I think.
Right, and so now you're talking about, uh, so we know what we would do, the new, if it's a new project, they follow the code.
Right.
If it's an existing situation...
Then we, I think we need to analyze it case by case and...
Well, we have, so the...
With a bias toward not making people cut down existing vegetation.
Right.
So we have the, is the resolution in the code, is it appearing in the code or is just a resolution that council just...
The two resolutions are not in the code.
Okay.
Yeah, the two 2015 resolutions, they're not in the code, they were just resolutions of the City Council.
That's, uh...
I mean, we could...
Makes it hard to figure out what the rules are.
Correct, and I, you know, and I presumably, if you had a safety issue that was of such a level where you, it would have to be corrected regardless, so I don't think somebody could say, well, I, I planted that in 1995. You know, it's like, well, okay, but, you know, again, I think that's Commissioner Nolan's, that hedges, and many of the common hedges people put in can get 10, 15 feet.
Or greater.
Even if their intent is to keep them five.
Right.
A few years of not trimming them.
Yeah.
And, you know, forget it, you know, they can get very large, so something that's not a safety concern now that's planted could be, a home sells to somebody who doesn't maintain the yard, for instance. You, you could have things like that happen, so, I mean, I would just view where safety is a legitimate concern, that's something where you would want to enforce at least what's on the books currently.
Right.
Right, right.
But if they, if you incorporate this resolution 15.38 into code, the Public Works Director just determines whether there, the particular encroachment poses a safety hazard, and if deemed a hazard, two, identifies appropriate corrective measures for these situations. I mean, additional wording could be added.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Relative to what Commissioner Quilisi was talking about with, uh, um, uh, to include, let's see, to identify appropriate corrective, corrective measures for these situations that, that, um, that shouldn't, that may include looking at, at other options, including, um, traffic, uh, improvements within the right-of-way, other improvements within the right-of-way, um, the installing a, um, alternative stop sign.
Yeah, the cantilevered stop sign or something.
Can't lever, I mean, we could, you could list a couple of examples so they understand...
You shouldn't post it in the right-of-way, I guess, right?
Well, I think what we've discovered in some places, you can't even see the stop sign because the hedge is a...
The hedge is...
So it's probably a thing of, one, identifying, is it a problem, and then you're going to identify what are the best solutions.
But of the solutions, right.
I mean, we said that, Steve, it might be kind of a case, I mean, luckily we have a small city.
Maybe some additional wording about consideration of...
Right.
Other alternatives that could, and you could even say, that including such things as, and...
Yeah.
So at least it's listed and I, I...
It's more focused on correcting the situation than just, again, not taking a one-size...
Recommend that the City Council tell the city manager to tell the Public Works Director to solicit problems and then go analyze them. Because it's, it's my impression, I, I don't talk to Greg Grant a lot, but I do some, and I've, I've never heard him talk about having done any of this.
Well, he's done...
Well, that could be a separate...
No, he's done outgoing, in the past, yeah, and has done, uh, remediation where there's been...
But we'd want to, we'd want to consider alternative means of, of providing safe intersections. Could be stop signs, cantilevered stop signs, I, I'm not sure what else there would be.
Well, like you said, the, the, some kind of a roundabout, I mean, that's, that's an improvement within the right-of-way that would, that would prevent, the prevent...
That's one thing we talked about at Franklin and Montgomery.
And a lot of times it comes down to cost.
Yeah.
Too, I mean...
And they'd have to put it on their works program.
Yeah, a lot of the street improvements, I mean, they're expensive.
Yeah.
We're talking about a lot of money and time to go through the whole process.
Right.
But I think...
Just putting a curb in the middle would, would not do, you've got to put some kind of plant in the middle or people won't notice it. They'll run up over the curb.
But anyway, I think just having some alternatives could be there, and maybe certain intersections do warrant, you know, some sort of remediation like...
Yeah.
Stop signs or a roundabout, or, you know, bulbouts or, you know, extended curb, curbs or something. But, I mean, that, it's got to be looked at, those, those are not cheap.
Yeah.
No, no. The stop signs are the cheapest.
It's less expensive to, um, to trim the hedge.
Yeah.
But, but at the same time, there may be certain areas that warrant.
I have no idea whether maintenance, the, just proper maintenance would handle most of these issues or not, I'm not really sure what the bad situations are because...
In some cases, it's where it was planted to begin with and, you know.
But...
Um, what about measuring the height of fences, walls and hedges from the, from the, from grade or from the roadway? When we're talking about a, an intersection, I think it should be from the roadway.
So that would be added?
I do too.
If we're talking about an intersection. Other places, it may matter less, although even driveways are a problem.
Setback is the most important thing.
Yeah, there's something about setback, um, this is at the bottom of page three of the staff report.
Because there's a large hedge at the corner of my street, but it is setback and it poses no problem whatsoever.
Then that's, then that's fine, yeah.
It's probably outside the, um, triangular, the curb, curb cutback.
Well, because it's probably got, you know, the 10-foot setback.
And then it's not a problem.
Then it's not a problem.
He should be maintaining sightlines at intersections and driveways.
Right.
Yes, that's what, that's what I think you're going after.
Yeah, to me, those are the two safety...
And there's a corner, a corner cutback or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, it's more like the outcome, not, there's many ways to get there, but it's so long as you can get to that outcome, that's the goal, rather than not enforcing it.
Right.
Right.
On your, uh, page three, the last bullet, how should the minimum front yard setback be determined?
Oh.
And I, I read through that a couple of times, and I looked at 10-2-404, table 2-3, and, and other places, and I'm still not sure I understand it completely, but it sounded like if your, if your house is setback more than 20 feet or 40 feet, or whatever the set, the setback rule is for your zone, then that's where the, that's as close as the fence can be?
Yeah.
Correct.
And, and I think we ought to, we ought to be measuring from the public right-of-way.
Yes.
Without regard to where the structure is.
Exactly, I agree.
This, this has been a sore point, and you may even have an application coming in for a variance where a home is set well back, but they wanted to put a front yard fence for privacy.
Sure.
That would comply with the structural setback, but because it's in front of the facade of the house, it doesn't meet this. And I think this has been interpreted different ways over the years.
Right, yeah.
But it does mean that somebody could have a very large setback just because of where the house was built.
Right.
Right. Well, I'd, I'd like to see...
Yeah, yes.
I think it would be a code change, but I'd like to see the set, the setback defined as a measurement from the public right-of-way without regard, from the property line.
I agree.
Without regard to where the house is placed.
Right, and I think it should be 10 feet maximum, because I think that if you're looking for a visibility window, that gives it to you. I don't really, I mean, I don't see why you have to...
I just made that little drawing there.
Yes.
That's, that's 10 feet, and it gets into that triangle that we would require people...
No, I'm talking, I don't mean at an intersection, I just mean for your, your house. For your front yard fence versus your side yard fence.
To me, the, the 10 feet is too, uh, be, I, I don't really want to have anything that is a big leap in something different from what's being done today, because I just think that, um, it could create just a lot of like, weird, weird, um, you know, one neighbor does this and then the next neighbor does this, and it just, so, um, but I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to where these people have these really huge setbacks of 40 feet or whatever, allowing some consideration of a higher fence in the, in, in the yard, and I'm thinking some kind of, um, architectural review or something, maybe that's too heavy-handed, but...
No, but I, I think if, like, if somebody had a...
It's not a variance, it would be a simple...
Right now, variance is the only option people have, and they very often... No, they very often don't really have the findings, because...
Right.
And it's expensive for the application.
It's very expensive.
The architectural review would mean they come in, they have a good design, and we go, yes, good.
Yeah, if somebody had a five-foot fence 25 feet back.
Let me take a step back and ask, so here's, you know, here's, here's your front yard. First of all, I don't know where the three feet came from, and I think that, that's a useless height. It doesn't, no, three feet in the front of your house.
Are you talking about the height?
The height.
Oh, the height.
I'm sure, if, I don't know, had to do with the general plan in that...
Well, it doesn't even cover a trash can, so...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
There are unsightly things that needed, that, that are, that's the reason...
Oh, three feet or less, okay.
So you put up a fence for several reasons, A, to define your property, B, to, to create a sense of place, C...
Keep your children out of the street.
And your dog, and...
Somebody else's dog coming in.
And also for, there's a lot of unsightly stuff in this town, and man, I don't want to sit on my porch and look at your trash can and look at your, whatever else it is. And three feet, you know, they all talked about in that presentation, screening parking. Well, what does it screen? The lights on the car, you see the whole car. Three feet does nothing for you, zero. I think three feet's a ridiculous height.
Well, so, we're talking, this is within the five foot.
You're talking about the setback, and you're talking about the height.
But I'm talking about it in relation to then, when you turn the corner, how far back you have to go at that, whatever we determine that a height is. And I don't think it should be more than 10 feet, because that creates a sight window so that it's not like there's a wall around every house, and yet...
You're saying...
Of height.
Only clear that triangle back to 10 feet?
No, she's talking about a side yard fence.
I'm talking about a side yard fence. I'm not talking about intersection, I'm talking about a side yard fence.
Five-foot thing, the five-foot thing first.
The five-foot setback.
Council, council already abolished that.
Well, they...
Yeah, but we, but we're reinstating it.
I, I think that the five-foot thing, i- if it's totally abolished, I, um, so if it were totally abolished, they could build what, with up to the street, six feet?
Three feet.
No, you, that, that would just affect setback, so if you left the three-foot height, you have, you have a three-foot height across the board in the front yard, and a five-foot setback that applies only to fences and walls.
That's what's, that's what's there right now.
Yeah, three feet, three feet height for fences, hedges and walls anywhere in the front yard.
No setback required.
See, I want to, I, I would...
The entire front yard.
No setback required, three feet.
Could be 30 feet, could be 20 feet, right, yeah.
Yeah, but with the, I, I think that within the first five feet, uh, for fences and walls, that they, we need to have a requirement for openness.
Yes.
I do not want to see walls, um, higher than like, like a little rock wall, higher than maybe two feet within that five foot. I mean, I'd be willing to talk about that, but I, I, I think a, a wall in that front part, okay, one more thing, so we're talking about residential, not commercial.
Yeah, that, but commercial we'll do another time, but we do need to do...
I think it's too much to bite off at one meeting, but yeah, this residential.
We know we need to do it, I agree, yeah.
I think, I think most of Ojai is open to the street, the residents are, are open to the street. Personally, I think that's a wonderful trait and, and community character, and I don't want to, like, have people building these, um, big walls and right, right, right up against the sidewalk, I don't, I mean, something low, okay, but, and particularly something open, a fence that's open, so.
And what if it's back five feet, then how high?
So how could, they can go, what's, what's the rule now?
Three feet is the.
Three, three feet in the three feet.
All the way to the house.
All the way to the house.
All the way to the house, wherever your house is, if it's fifty feet back, that's all you can do.
Because the house, the placement of the house defines the setback.
And it's only three feet, all the way back to the house.
Which is part, which is bullet two, that's the problem with bullet two.
I have a question, when I read through this, wha, uh, I don't believe I saw, I, I may have missed it. Why did the city council abolish the five-foot setback for the, um, fences and walls? What was the reasoning behind it?
I think it was really because you, you still didn't affect the height, you still were keeping a three-foot height.
Okay, so.
So if something were at the property line or five, or five feet back, it was still low. You didn't, you didn't say you could go five feet high and be at the property line, it was just the setback.
So.
So do you think three feet is, if they build a three-foot wall anywhere in there, that's going to be okay?
So for instance, we have three feet, uh, city of Ojai, Santa Barbara has three and a half feet, and then in our presentation.
Three, four.
Planning, they were kind of in the three to four foot, and I think that kind of gets back to the general plan, and this is for the residential area, that, you know, generally that's, you know, it's a walkable community, that we didn't want a wall in all the properties and, you know, so there's this kind of neighborly interaction.
It isn't important.
And so I think it was important too, and I, I underst, and I believe that's part of the reason they had the height limitation. Truthfully, I'm okay if they had the five-foot setback and, and kept it that way, but I know, you know, when we look at, um, the photos from around town, that the majority probably what's there is a mix of this, that and the other. So I really think it gets back to, do we want to keep it this, we could tell city council, no, we think we should have a five-foot setback in the wall, or we keep the height between three to four feet, we could decide what that is, and that you are allowed to have fences and walls at the street or at the, the property line, not exceeding three to four feet, but the hedges would be a five-foot setback. And this is for new, new pro, uh, new projects, and you still maintain the height, but you have the five-foot setback. I do like what Santa Barbara has, that you have that ten-foot setback then, where you could actually go higher. So if somebody had a big lot and they wanted a higher one, you know, or even if they had a small lot, they could do it, as long as they went ten feet.
I'm still, I'm still confused because we're talking at one point about setback from the property line.
Right.
And then in another, and five feet or whatever number, at another place, we're talking about the setback is defined as from the property line to the house.
That's a side setback.
Do we get rid of that, do we?
Well, that, that's, yeah, because that's, that's mostly tied to what's defining your front yard, so that limits the height of the fence.
Yeah.
That's, that's all it does, is it places a height limit, so.
So the highest fence, the highest fence or wall in your front yard setback area.
Right.
Is three feet.
Three feet.
Present light.
Right, and the setback area is defined as from the property line to the front wall of a house.
Right, so if you had a required setback of twenty feet and you built your house at twenty feet, as soon as you go twenty-one feet back, you can go up to six feet, because you're not in the front yard anymore, versus somebody who's at the same zoning.
Except the house is there.
But you're now, you're now set behind, you're further back than the house at that point.
So I think we need to.
Something higher, whatever the limit we set for the very front, uh, if you want to go to six feet in, in that front yard setback area, I, I have trouble with that, I just think that that needs a little more review.
We have people that are doing it today, that's part of the problem.
That may be why it's a review issue too, because again, I, I think somebody can do a nice six-foot fence, not at the property line, but if it's setback fifteen, twenty feet.
Or even ten, yeah.
You know, like the one example where it doesn't even screen the whole front of the house.
Right. Right.
And it's designed well, it could probably look perfectly fine.
Yeah, no, 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 that's what I'm saying, I don't have, I don't have a problem with that.
But it's hard to throw a blanket, five feet, somebody could do a five-foot wall, you may not want.
But like, uh, on Grand Avenue, there's a lot of properties and they're all, they're all, one beside the other, and they've set that, they, they're, actually, they have a higher than a.
Those fences, what are you talking about?
They're like six feet, but they're all set back five feet, so.
If it's in the front yard, that isn't allowed.
It's not allowed.
Technically not allowed.
They're all pretty old.
On par to code.
It needs to be three feet.
That doesn't mean anybody's ever done anything about it.
Yeah.
So we need to figure out if there is a setback, if there is one, what it is, and then what are our height limitations.
Well, you guys have done the complete streets walk, I mean, what you, what do you, you've seen a lot, what do you, what do you think about that?
Well, I agree that we keep our, um, intersection or, you know, corner, triangle.
Keep it safe.
Keep it safe.
Yeah.
And then we also consider the driveways.
Yep, agreed.
And we could look at what Santa Barbara had as a reference, if we wanted to, but I, I'm not necessarily opposed to even a wall or a fence, and we could decide if it was open, although there are solid ones around town, but if there is a limit on the height that they are right up to the property line, and if you want to go any taller, maybe it's ten feet back, like Santa Barbara, and then maybe you do have to go to a, a review and have it looked at. But once again, you know, is that something the city's going to be able to do?
Yeah.
And we're supposed to act as like a review board here also, but is that too complicated for people to come in?
It doesn't make sense for us to make rules.
Yeah, that's what I mean. See, it's not realistic.
See, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be that much.
We need to figure out a realistic solution.
Staff, staffing and, there's a real issue, staffing and the amount of boards and commissions based on, so it's kind of like a.
You mentioned it in the report.
It, it's realistic, because I think Santa Barbara has great examples, like I, I worked for the city of Palo Alto, it was a city of sixty thousand. We had a large staff.
Right.
You know, and Palo Alto, as you can imagine, was very regulatory on things, but you had, you could control the process. We had an architectural review board that met all day on Fridays.
Yep.
That was probably the most critical hearing to get through in the city, and we don't have that here. I mean, you meet twice a month and you're taking on a big range of issues, so it does seem like, yeah, there's sort of a, by right, you can do this. You know, whether it's three feet or four feet.
Right.
Your setback this, and if you want more, then you have to come up with some process that allows people to deviate.
And it needs to be simple and affordable.
It's going to take more time, but it's, it's, it, it shouldn't be the equivalent of coming in with a new development proposal before the planning commission.
That's too much, I agree.
But it should have some review.
Most communities have a front yard setback where you can't do anything more than four feet high.
Mm-hmm.
That's twenty or twenty-five feet back, I mean, that's pretty.
But I think that.
But we have different numbers for different zones right now.
If you have your five-foot setback, and then you, and then you have your four-foot fence, you shouldn't have to go back more than ten feet with that before you can go higher. What's the point of that?
Openness, I mean, I might not.
But then you've got fifteen feet already that's open.
I'll tell you something, I wouldn't like that in my situation, I wouldn't like my neighbors doing that to me, I would not like it at all.
How close are you to your neighbors?
No, because our fences, our higher fences are all from the house back, and if all of a sudden they can put a high fence out in the front, it's going to, it, that really has an impact on your neighbor.
There are six-foot fences all over town that I think are beautiful, there's a, you know.
But I don't want that, I mean, I would not want that by right.
Are you very close to your neighbors?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, we have about eight, eight thousand square foot lots, but our fences, we do have fences, but they're open, they're the split rail. And to, if they could all of a sudden put in a six-foot high, solid fence, or even worse, a wall, I mean, a wall is really much more imposing in its mass than a fence.
Well, there is a thing in the code, I believe, where you can make your back fence higher if both neighbors agree.
I would be upset. I would be like really upset.
You can.
So perhaps we can do that, it can, if your neighbor agrees, then it's fine.
It would be an option, I'm just like, I'm, again, trying to just keep it on the front yard and, and that's, I think.
Because again, you're talking about, this house is eight thousand square feet, this house has sixteen thousand feet, the neighbor's twenty-five feet away, the neighbor's eight feet away, I mean, every house is different and that's, I think.
Well, different neighborhoods tend to have similar sized properties.
Right, but your neighborhood's different from mine and different from hers and different from his.
That's what I'm saying.
And so that's why something that's appropriate in one neighborhood may not be appropriate in another neighborhood.
Well, that's why I originally had said, oh, what about the neighborhood planning? You know, to look at it, because for instance, I'll, I'll, um.
Good idea.
It was a good idea, but now I, you know, now we can't really do it.
At the counter, we get sometimes is, like in country called drug, they want to do those beautiful rock walls, it's kind of like, but anyway, it's the pillar is taller than the fence.
Right.
And we can't allow their pillar to be more than three feet.
Right.
Right.
Right, there's no exceptions for, for features, like a, a column or anything.
It ought to be a little easier to do.
I think there needs, we need to have general guidelines, but there needs to be some flexibility.
Agreed.
And, um.
I have a neighbor who has a three-foot fence with eighteen-inch pillars every six feet.
And are you fine with that?
No, I don't like it at all, because it's a four-and-a-half foot wall, it's not, I'm sorry, it's not a fence, it's a brick wall or a concrete block wall.
So it's over the three feet.
And it's four-and-a-half feet high.
It's, it's, it's a three-foot wall, but it's got periodic, another eighteen inches worth of pillar.
Yeah, silencer.
And so if you're at the corner and trying to look down the street to see who's coming.
There's that corner issue again.
You've got a four-and-a-half foot wall there.
How far is it setback?
It's right on the property line.
Well, that's the problem. So it's not the height, it's the setback.
It's interesting.
It's the setback, the height doesn't matter, it's the setback.
It kind of gets back to that, the five-foot, I go, initially, you know, even when we started this like a year and a half ago or whenever it was, I went, I'm not so opposed to what we had, already had on the books.
That's exactly what I thought too, and I've changed my mind.
Because I felt like, oh, it works with the general plan, you know, here's, here's kind of the town character.
I think, I think we need to treat open style fences different.
But I disagree with you that that's the town character, because when I walk around in my neighborhood, nothing's compliant to that, and I think it's beautiful.
That's probably the issue.
Open style fences, that's very.
Those are two different things.
And the examples, especially like even at the council meeting.
And I think that up the street, I just looked at a house on the weekend.
It's always the picket fence decided.
And if there are more opens up there, nobody uses the front yard.
There's some very nice open style fences that are gone up in the arbor lot, um, and they're, they're probably even, some of them are even higher than, I mean, I'm not sure they're in the city, but.
I have split rail in my front yard, mostly you can't see it because of the bushes, but.
I love split rail and.
I do too.
Bushes are probably in violation.
Yes, they're fifty years old, but I'm sure they're in violation, yes.
But it, but the openness question, I think that's, when people think the five-foot setback's a bad idea, they're always thinking of that open, like a four-foot open fence at the property line, people say, who cares? Not a big deal, it's when they build a four-foot wall at the property line, people care.
If we're going to do that, we should define what open style.
Yes.
Means.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, some.
Like fifty percent.
Samples.
Yeah.
And no more than fifty percent visual coverage or something like.
Essentially, we're creating, you know, these guidelines and we can say, like, the same thing with the materials.
Yeah.
Um, you know, what's.
Maybe you can start with that, because we, Bobby's okay with that, right? Open, uh, open style fencing would be fine.
With a height limitation.
But.
In the front, in the five, five foot.
Back to the word setback.
In the five foot. Anywhere up to the property line, yeah, I'm fine with that.
The setback though defines how close to the property line you can build side fences, walls, fences and walls.
Well, we'd say.
That's what has to do with, the setback is from the property line to your house.
Oh, correct, so, I mean, it's almost like they should have used the term your front yard.
Right.
Because it would clarify it's different from setback.
Because now we have two different kinds of setbacks.
Right.
We've got setback used in two different ways here.
Right, right.
Yeah.
In your front yard area, you can go no more than three feet, no matter where, in the front yard area. But the five-foot setback is just from the property line.
Right.
So if you came in with it, and we've had it, people want to build a low wall at the property line, it's two feet, and it's like, it's gotta go back five feet.
The second use of the word setback though occurs where setbacks are defined for different zones, right?
Correct, right, so if somebody called up calmly and said, what are my setbacks?
Or to the front of your house, whichever is more.
Right, yeah, and that's where I think they get mixed is very, I think people honestly just, they make an honest mistake a lot, with they look at, my setback is this, it's twenty feet, it's twenty-five feet, whatever, and then you find out in terms of putting a fence or wall in your front yard, it's relational to your house.
Right.
So it could be a lot more.
Exactly, it's very confusing, it's very.
I think, I think it should be in relation to the property line, not the house, can we recommend doing that?
It's, I think, only a question of, they're still going to have to meet the setback, you know, like, they wouldn't be going less than if, if it's a greater height, say. If you were to allow somebody to do a taller than three-foot fence in their front yard, would it still then have to meet the required, say, twenty-five-foot setback? That, that would be a legitimate question, because now you're talking going over three feet.
And yours say yes, and I say doesn't need to be twenty-five feet, because basically you're just creating a window, and again, it depends, you, you feel like you, it could make a difference in your property.
Yeah, I, I, I have, open fencing, fine, open fencing going to even four feet in the front yard, fine. Front yard, notice that.
Four feet. It's too high.
Open fence.
Open, an open fence.
Open fence, open fence.
Four feet's not allowed.
No, but we're talking about what do we recommend?
This is a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I would be okay with a.
I'm okay with a closed fence at four feet, because four feet you can see right over.
You mean right at the property line?
Even at the property.
Any, anywhere in the front yard, I think she means.
Yes, anywhere.
I would agree.
Anywhere in the front yard.
It's not just because I'm over six feet tall, but almost anybody except a small child can see over a four-foot fence.
Right.
Yeah, and I think it gets back to just, you know, the driveway, how do you deal with the driveway? But you know, Santa Barbara, they are talking about, I believe, I'll double check on this, I think that driveway issue hap, happens to be on streets.
Three feet at the property line, four feet if you said.
No, it's, it's streets that don't have a sidewalk, I believe, yeah, without a sidewalk.
So there's no setback.
Yeah, so that, but we should have that, because we do have streets that don't have sidewalks, so we should look at it.
That's true, but the property line is there, whether the sidewalk is or not.
Well, here's one with the sidewalk.
They have it for all, all of them.
They have it for both, they have it for both, yeah.
So with the sidewalk, what is it?
Uh, it's ten, it's ten feet in both directions, so here. So here's the, um, here's the sidewalk.
And what's the height, ten feet in both directions?
Well, this isn't about the height, this is about the, kind of a setback. Well, here's, their height is three and a half feet.
Right, so you can't, if you're in that triangle by the driveway, you can't exceed three and a half.
Can't exceed three and a half feet.
And, and I suspect part of the reason three and a half might get used too is mixing in commercial is where you have outdoor dining or areas where you need a separation, you need some kind of wall, it has to be three and a half for you, you can't serve alcohol.
Right. I think they made.
Three and a half minimum.
I think they changed it to four, actually, recently.
It may, because we've run into, with the three-foot limitation, we end up then having to do a variance there.
Yes.
Yeah, we need to get this cleaned up, commercial and residential.
Yeah, for six inches or a foot.
Yeah.
You know, and that, that will come up more and more with the outdoor dining going on, so.
And also with, um, what is it, SEP TED, where they, you know, they have the safety standards, this has to do with, um, security, like with policemen, have you, they typically specify a maximum three feet high. So.
That's what they can guarantee, that an officer can jump over in this, in a necessary.
Well, it's basically like if they're driving by, they can see over and they can see like into a parking lot or into a lot. And so typically on, you know, commercial sites.
They never do that in Ojai, they never drive by and look.
Well, anyway.
Telling you commercially, the police never do it.
So if you're sitting down in your car, then maybe your eyes are not above four feet.
That's a good question, but anyway, I know that it, unless it's changed, in the past, it was always, uh, three feet for securities.
But I guess another question I have is I know, again, the council wants to take this issue up again, I think you're getting into it more than they have as well. I think there's mostly been a simple setback height discussion, but it, would you want to consider this again before it goes back to council? Or kind of make recommendations on some of the key issues and then defer others to later, like guidelines and that type of thing, which clearly we're not going to answer tonight?
Yeah, we are, we are in agreement on certain things.
Because I think like the end of the staff report, I tried to put like safety issues, do you think hedges should be different from fences and walls, where it's not safety, but just in the front yard, are they different? Is going over three feet acceptable?
Yes.
That's, you know, those were the sort of questions on short term.
And what, how do we define the front yard?
The five feet back, I know council's going to want to address that.
And how do you define the front yard setback?
It's another issue, yes.
What about on the side and rear with the, with a hedge? I mean, there should be a minimum dimension, it has to be planted. If you're planting either on any of those properties, there needs to be that.
So hedges should be setback from property lines regardless, because they grow forward as well as up.
Oh, so you mean like when you.
And, and your neighbor is perfectly within his rights to go take a hedge trimmer.
Yes.
To your, to your hedge and cut it back to the property line.
So here, there's, here's something we need to look at, are we saying planted at five feet? Or that the face of the hedge can't exceed five feet?
I would say planted.
Well.
Think that's, it could grow bigger?
Yeah, because depending on what the plant material is.
But if you plant it within the fi- at the five foot setback line, then you have five feet for, to grow on that side, right?
Yeah, and then.
To your.
And then you should be able to.
So, so it has to be planted five feet back from your property line.
Yeah, we could say that.
Because then you've got the five feet of the sidewalk area, if there is one, and then you have another five feet, so now we're ten feet back.
Minimum setback.
Yes.
It sounds reasonable, because I think if it were five feet back and you assume, that would be like a ten foot wide hedge.
Which a lot of them can do.
Some can do, but that's, that's a pretty thick hedge.
There are.
A lot of hedges.
Six, eight, six feet wide is a non.
There are a lot of hedges that are planted right on the property line.
Yes, so no, it needs to be setback.
trunk is like six inches away or something.
It needs to be setback five.
So we can say, and we can have diagrams, you know, a simple diagram showing this, the center of the, you know, like a planting plan rule.
I'd also, I would personally like to see the front yard setback redefined.
Yes.
Because right now it says X feet, depending on the zone, X feet or to the front of the structure.
Right.
Whichever is greater, and I'd like to take that last part out.
Right.
I don't know if we need it, is it, is it just?
Well, it's, if your, if your house is set back a hundred feet.
I know.
And there are a lot of them in the arborata like that, then you can't build anything in there.
I agree, yeah.
And I don't think that's fair.
No, I agree.
Um, so maybe we can just recommend that they redefine front yard setback.
Right.
Right, I, I, I would agree that that should be distinguished, cause there's probably some neighborhoods where that makes sense, I, I think the intent is, we don't want people screening off their house, so we want the house to be prominent, but there are some homes that are setback so far.
Yeah.
You don't really read them from the street anyway.
Anyway.
Go up, go up foothill or go up Libby on the east side where the ground drops off, all you see is trees. The house is back in there somewhere.
Tucked away, yeah.
So.
And the crazy thing is, we, we even had one example came in where there was an accessory unit in the front yard.
Ah, okay.
Within setbacks, it was appropr- it was built appropriately, it was set back, but you know, then that becomes.
Yeah.
What your, defines your front yard space, so it was the smaller structure because it was the closest, the way this is written, like it's tied to that.
Right.
So it, I mean, not that that's common.
Across the street from me, where there's a little accessory building that's between the main house and the, and the street.
So that would define the front yard.
I think that would be good.
So are you.
Five foot setback for planting a hedge.
Yes.
I think is a good idea.
From the property line.
Five feet back from the property line. An open fence, an open style fence, if we can agree on a definition of open style, maybe at least fifty percent visually open. Yeah.
Yeah, and we can list, list them in samples.
Define the number, but the intent is that an open fence should be treated differently than a solid fence or a wall.
Yeah.
That would, cause I think that was really the issue of getting rid of the five foot setback was, everyone has that open fence in mind.
Right.
Not a wall at the property line.
So now the, our next question is, what about the walls, solid walls and solid fences? So we're saying we could have five feet in, five foot minimum to plant a hedge.
Right.
And we'll, and then we'll have a height limit. Um, and then we're saying, um, an open fence can be anywhere, all the way up to the property line. So now, the next question is what about solid fences and solid walls?
Three foot on the property line can be higher if it's setback.
That's what I would say, I don't see a three foot, a three foot wall.
Right, I don't have a problem with that.
Right at the, at the sidewalk being a problem.
We already have it in a lot of places, think about even like the museum or like St. Thomas Aquinas, that's a tall.
About four foot at the property line?
No, not a wall. If they want, if they want a, if they want.
You can see over it.
They want something to set off their front yard, they go, they go.
You can, you, I mean, I, the thing is, you, you can see, you can see over it and, and you know, like, if you, well, I suppose if you have a dog, you can put an open fence up.
I do not wanna see a four foot wall right up in that five foot area close to the sidewalk.
It depends, if you have a, a sightline problem, is it because you're driving by or because you're walking along the sidewalk?
Yeah, I think it's just, it's too imposing, anything over, I mean, I'd go with three feet, three feet in the. They could put plants.
And what if they just solid three foot?
Oh, oh, there's another variation.
What if it's open?
Solid fence with a lattice on top.
What if it's open? Well, see, that, and that's acceptable, because that's, that, that typically, technically, that lattice is a piece of landscape, something, that's, that's okay, isn't it?
Also the same material as the fence, I would think you'd count the lattice as part of the fence.
It hasn't been.
I don't know.
Yeah. I remember Betsy Clap went through that.
Feet may not be enough, it seems to me, I, I've lived in California and Texas and Virginia, and Ohio, and it seems to me a lot of places, if you have a pool, you've gotta have a taller than six foot fence.
Well, that's code.
Around it.
Taller than six now?
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, it's not taller.
I think it's just five or six.
It's five, I think it's five, and then you have to have the railing.
Code is here, it's probably six.
Code here is five.
Yeah.
Five.
It's five.
Yeah.
If you don't have the solid, um, approved pool covered.
I would be willing to go higher in the rear yards, you know, even to, cause it's six now, allow higher fences for the rear yards. If it's seven, if, but I think a neighbor has, I think the neighbors need to sign off.
Certainly, there's a lot of seven foot fences, you know, the six with the lattice is common.
Front, I mean, I don't know, you know, I think we have to be very careful about, um.
What if somebody plants, plants a hedge right along the property line between two parcels? Not between the parcel and the street or the right away.
Like on the side, on the side property line.
Yeah, what if your, what if your neighbor plants bushes right on the property line and they all grow to six feet tall?
That's all right.
I'm less opposed to that than a wall, a high wall and a high fence in the front.
So I mean.
But we, but we said, we said, we, hedges are okay if they're planted five feet back.
Back from the property lines.
From the front property line or the side property?
Front property line.
We should go here, I mean, basically, I think Luke said this, um, we're really concentrating on the front.
Yes.
We're really con- I mean, not that we can't address the other ones, but the front is the one that's more complicated.
Front yard.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, so then.
Finding the front yard, I mean.
Three feet or open if you're up to the property line, four feet if you're setback.
Within that five foot thing, the five foot.
On your property line, has to be three feet or open. And if you set it back, you can have four feet.
There we go, okay.
If you set it back five feet, you can have it four feet tall?
Yes.
I could live with that.
I could too.
Well, when it's out of the, I don't wanna, if it's out of the front yard area, I don't even wanna talk about it, but then it would be six feet.
The front, yeah.
Yeah, it would be six feet, if it's not in the front yard, it's six feet.
Right, now.
But how do we define the front yard?
Now, what about that's, what about that nice screen?
I almost feel like you say the.
That was in front of the house, how do we get that in there?
Why, is that too ambiguous or?
That would be something this isn't gonna solve, cause that's, that's a different, right.
I don't know, my neighbor.
Like, right now, yeah, that, that, that nice fence that didn't block the whole front of the house, yet that would be in the front yard.
You could say the front yard.
But if you, but, but if your front yard setback was on, only had to go ten feet, that would work.
Well, then it would work.
Then it would work, because then it's screening the house, it's not really part of your front yard setback.
Well, the, the picture you showed had a six foot wood fence, didn't screen the whole house.
Right.
But it was in the front yard setback, if you define the front yard as to the face of the house, or some actual number, whichever is greater.
But it didn't impact your neighbors.
It's like, it's a privacy screen.
Privacy screen.
Wall, windows.
That, that type of example shows you the deficiency of a code, where you, you, you have limitations with a code.
Absolutely.
In a code.
There needs to be a director review or something for those.
Yeah, like to deal with that, that's why I'm like, I, I know we can't get there tonight, but.
Yeah.
You, you will have things, you would say, I like that, and the code will not allow it.
And it makes sense to have those options.
No, actually, there's a house on my street that has something like that, and it gives privacy to that front bedroom, and it's really pretty.
Yeah, I think that was a great example.
There's one very much like it, that we had a case here that was on Mercer Avenue.
Yes, yes.
Uh, they had a, they had a six foot tall, solid wood fence that was up close to the house.
Right.
For privacy.
Cause it gave them a little front patio area or something.
Exactly, and that's nice.
The further you get setback, height becomes less of a factor.
Right, exactly.
That's why I'd like to see the front yard setback redefined.
Yes.
As if it's twenty feet or it's forty feet or whatever in your zone, then leave it at that and don't bother with where the house is. That would, that would allow that little fence that creates a front patio.
Had more than twenty-five feet in front of your house.
Well, whatever the number is for your zone. Say it's, say it's forty, say it's twenty feet for whatever zone you're in, R one or R one half or, I don't know what, I can't remember. Um, if you wanna build a six foot solid wood fence behind that, okay, you've still left a lot of space on the front side of your front yard.
But what if your house is only twenty-five feet back?
Well.
And you went a little privacy screen at twenty feet back?
Then I think you need director review.
Then it's, yeah.
Then, yeah.
Then we go visit you.
It depends then what the number is for your zone, if the number for your zone is, is twenty-five feet and you wanna do twenty, then you go ask him.
But you know what else is, that Santa Barbara, if I'm understanding it correctly, is a lot easier.
It goes up by increments.
Feet, you have flexibility to go higher, and then if you even wanna go higher beyond that, then you go to the director.
You can actually go very high under Santa Barbara's guidelines, it just has to get reviewed and approved.
Right, but I think.
I mean, I, I'm in favor of the ten foot thing.
Yeah, and that, that gets rid of all the.
Ten foot thing?
That you can, you could put that screen ten foot, is it ten foot back from your property line or from your setback?
I think it's.
I think it's from the property.
I think it's the property line, so then you get rid of all the, the different setbacks for every different zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I do think ultimately it becomes a design issue, cause somebody can just build twenty-five feet back, their house is forty feet back, and they just build a solid fence that doesn't look very good, you're probably gonna say that this doesn't look very good.
You still have to have design.
But it meets the code, it would meet the current code.
Right.
It's, it's just that, you're trying to solve a qualitative problem through quantitative, and you can't solve everything.
Always so many things that meet the code that are horrible.
But, yeah, we, we had, shortly after I started here, a guy came in with a thirty inch wall, I think, at the property line. And it was perfectly integrated into his house, he had a mid-century modern house, he did a great job, his neighbor had it, and I could, I signed up on that because it made sense.
Yeah.
And we're saying that that would be okay.
But it was thirty.
I mean, that's.
That was, that was less than three feet, yeah.
Yeah, why wouldn't you do that, yeah.
Right.
So, you know, that was sort of, if someone complained, they'd say, oh, my mistake, but it was the right thing to do, it was very thoughtfully designed.
Right.
And we don't have a design review.
Right.
So it's like, and you had no reason to get a variance, so it's like, okay, well, what do you do here? We, we've had a number of those where people have like consistency, their neighbors have it.
Mm-hmm.
Not that that's always, if everyone's doing it wrong, that's no reason to keep doing it wrong, but if that becomes the neighborhood character.
Right, and I think, I think we, we have a tradition here because the processes are so complicated and so expensive, that's why people go out and do things illegally. No, nobody built anything ever without a permit in Massachusetts, when I lived there, nobody did. But it wasn't like what we go through here at all.
Wasn't hard to get one.
No.
Well.
It wasn't as expensive, it wasn't as complicated, you didn't have to submit as much stuff.
May be a bigger problem than the commission can tackle, but.
Right.
We could at least try to set some different standards.
So I say what we do now, we have to really bear that in mind and try and simplify the process so that people get educated and they do comply and they do a better job, I think everybody wants that.
Well, I'd, I'd say for the fences and walls, let's stick with three feet back to whatever that setback is for that zone. Not to the front of the house, if that's farther back.
Three feet's too low.
Too low?
Three feet's too low.
Three feet within that, within the first five feet, and then I.
Okay, okay, three feet within five feet, plant the hedge.
At five feet.
At five feet.
I mean, if you want something tall or plant a hedge.
Yeah, if you're farther back than five feet from the, from the property line, then go to four feet, go to five feet, what?
We need to define that.
I thought the hedge, I mean, I would be willing to let the hedge grow and not limit the height.
Yeah, right now, hedges have the same height limit.
Right now, it's three feet.
But a hedge, like, yeah, every hedge in the city is not uniform.
No, they're all different heights.
Yeah, I mean, very few are three or less.
Yeah.
So they should be at the property line, but they still in the front yard, it should be three feet. And again, I don't even wanna open the door, when is two or three shrubs a hedge?
No.
Cause that's.
I would do three feet at the property line.
Basically, a hedge is like a living green wall.
Exactly.
It's like a solid plant.
It's carbon sequestration.
There you go. The best kind of wall you can ask.
Yes, but that's a whole different issue from the visual aspect of it. And, and the aspect of, is a row of bushes the same as a hedge?
Cause you will get some, I mean, I've seen some where like, it was kind of become an informal hedge over time, there's a house here that looked like a tall brush, but any, a whole bunch of.
I've seen that too, and even like an oak tree, and they're all.
And they just all grown into each other.
They just cut them in.
Property line, so someone could say, that's a hedge, it's too high, and I could, if I own the home, I'm wanting to keep it, but say, are you kidding me? I just have it for my independent shrubs, they grew into each other.
Just a bunch of bushes.
Base up a little bit and say it's tree, it's just a four foot tree, or eight foot tree, so there would be, I'm getting out there, but. These are the things.
The people, I hear, yeah, they do.
I just think the basic nuts and bolts issues, there's no way it solves all of this, it's a way bigger issue.
Right, so we're just talking front property line and front yard this morning, and safety, right?
Five foot setback, three foot height, that, those are like the key things that you could say, city council, here's what we recommend.
Okay, well, I am definitely not in favor of keeping any wall at three feet, I just think three feet's too low.
Within the fir- five feet, first five feet though.
Within the first five feet, yes, I'll take that.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, three feet, if you go five foot back, I would say it's gotta be four feet. And then if you go ten foot back from that, I think you can make it higher.
I mean, well, I.
Then you're fifteen feet back now.
Because the whole front yard, we're trying to keep it open and so.
You're trying to keep it open.
Yeah, because I.
I, I don't see any, okay, well, let me tell you why I don't, I don't buy that, I don't want, I don't think you need to keep it open. I think in some instances, some neighborhoods, maybe it's appropriate, I think in many, it's not.
That's the neighborhood planning.
If there's crap in every house around you, you wouldn't wanna see it. If there's trash cans everywhere in everybody's front yard, you wouldn't wanna see them. And if there's dogs that leap over them, you wouldn't want that either.
I, you know, the.
And I sit in my front yard.
I don't like them being, from different from Montecito for that reason, because Montecito's very closed.
Sit in your front yard, can I ask you that question? Do you sit in your front yard? No.
I do.
I sit in my front yard and I want my front yard to feel like a, a place. I sit in my front yard and I want my front yard to feel like a, a place.
I would be happy to sit in my front yard just the way it is, but I don't have any chairs out there.
But most people tend not to because they don't feel they have any privacy. I don't wanna see the sixteen cars that are across the street.
Well, do a hedge.
I have a hedge.
Keep it three feet.
It's our.
Okay, so, so.
It's growing. It's not that big yet.
I would be willing, once the hedge is set back, planted five feet back from the front property line, I'm okay with it grows to whatever it grows to. But are you saying that's a problem?
Well, right now, it is.
That would be, that, that would be a good recommendation, cause right now, it would be, if a hedge has a three foot height limitation, and I think that was an issue.
But with the.
I like that idea.
So that's the proposal.
Building, building a fence or a wall that close to the property line, that's more than four feet tall anyway, is a, is a problem.
It's a great, well.
Yes.
Is a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, yeah, so that would be, if a hedge was set back, the three foot height limitation is out.
Yes.
Hedge out.
Right, yeah.
Okay, like, that's a kind of recommendation.
I think if the fence is set back, if three foots, it needs, if it needs to be higher than three feet.
We're making progress.
That actually helps a lot of neighborhooders when you have that pre-existing condition.
If it's set back.
Yeah.
There's a lot of those pre-existing conditions.
I think four is reasonable.
Also, just to, to get one more solid recommendation in, I like this idea of if you're going to build a fence or a wall.
Nothing.
And I would say if you're gonna put in a hedge, you need to come in to the city for a review. At the desk is fine, because you'll know the rules.
He just gave you another job.
Any fee?
Pardon, pardon me? And, and pay ten dollars.
No, no fee. No fee.
Ten dollars for a fence, wall, or hedge permit. And after that, you can.
Yeah, well, we couldn't, we couldn't charge for one, one, but.
It's too much.
And even the, the hedge, I think, would be, again, it gets to be more problematic, cause I could see somebody stopping by a nursery.
Yeah.
And I just, it's, but, and I just find, I'm gardening my yard, I plant the hedge. I'm not gonna think to come to the city.
On Saturday, right.
Okay, well, at least, at least for a fence or a wall.
A free or nominal fee permit. That way the city could use it to check.
Right.
Yeah.
I like that.
Yeah, can't go six feet.
Yeah.
It has to be set back.
Come in, pay ten bucks and Sh- and Sherry will tell you what the height restrictions are.
Yeah, they'll have it on. Eventually be online, you can even look it up, eventually.
And, and while we should at least, like, changes that are getting made.
Can't force people to do that, though.
Yeah, they should. Exactly.
You can't, you could force them to come into city hall and put down ten dollars and ask the question.
Yeah, or they, or you can go online if it's posted, the information's there.
At least, the city is requiring a free or some nominal fee permit for all fences and walls.
Good.
Or just in your front yard.
Yeah, in the front yard.
Yeah, not.
Which will be defined.
You're replacing a backyard fence, who cares?
Okay.
But the front yard, if you're going to do it, that way we have to see it.
It's like an architectural feature.
And if we said, yes, that's acceptable, and then it goes up at six feet at the property line, it's like, no. Because I do think with fences very.
Well, this came up with one twelve east summer. Cause they're putting, they're putting fences in between those, those three little bungalows, right?
Right, but I think with fences, it happens a lot too, because if they're six feet or less, you don't need a building permit.
Right.
Right.
Contractors, they come out and build a fence.
Right, right.
And it's not illegal because it didn't need a building permit.
Right.
That's how they get missed.
Well, even a garden wall doesn't need a.
And, and you could build, right now, they could build that six foot fence right out to the sidewalk, I think.
It's under a certain.
Not knowing the rule.
No, of course.
Oh, they might just do it, they're saying.
And that's, and that does happen.
Yeah.
It, it's, again, it's, it's not like these things are infrequent. It's harder to find front yards that meet the code than it is to find them that do.
On the other hand, Cindy Convery had to cut down the front part of her side fence because it, it was within a certain distance of her front property line. But the grade was six feet below the street. And she had to cut it back, which made no sense to me.
Well, there is, I, I was gonna show this, but I didn't, I, there were so few people I showed.
I mean, this is, this is a while ago.
Well, several months ago, there was a similar issue, I think it was in Santa Rosa, where they enforced fence height provisions. Where a person was forced to cut their six foot fence down to three feet and they were not happy about it. You can probably Google this anywhere.
It's on YouTube.
Yeah, and the person then filled his.
Uh-oh.
Side yard area with a lot of nude mannequins.
So what's it just came down?
Because there was.
Taller than three feet, yes.
Well, by lowering from six to three, you could now see them. If it was at six.
You wouldn't have seen them.
You wouldn't see them.
See, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I thought about this as we were coming back. I didn't know how widely it circulated, but I think it was Santa Rosa, it was all over. And the traffic was queued up, with driving by, going more. So it was a reaction to the city getting hardcore enforcing regulations. That he's like, okay, you don't have a provision for mannequins. In public art. So I watched that thinking, I hope we don't.
Well, that's a broad def-, excuse me, that's a wide definition of.
We have a lot of strange things in the yards in us.
So when you get heavy handed, you can.
Yeah, that's true.
Recommend that you take it to the council now or not come back to you.
Yes, I, I, I think we've agreed on three or four things tonight we'd like you to take back.
I'm in a different phase, but I think you have a recommendation on some points.
Yeah, and then we could.
Safety should be enforced.
Right.
Yeah.
Driveway maybe.
But alternative means of providing.
Additional wording with that.
Either traffic stopping or, or sight lines.
But go hack it down, but provide safety oriented solutions.
Right.
Yes.
Where there's a safety concern for visibility and intersections of driveways.
Right.
Hedges would need to be set back five feet, which they are not required to be.
Right, and that's for new projects.
But the height limitation on hedges, you don't want the height limitation that fences and walls have.
Correct.
No.
Correct.
Fences and walls could be at the property line if they're three feet.
Yes.
Open or not?
Yes.
Open, you said.
Open only or solid?
Well.
Three feet is pretty low.
I don't think a solid three foot wall looks bad.
No.
So three feet.
Is fine.
I think that would be okay.
So the only thing that's changing is you're getting rid of the five foot setback if it's a three foot maximal height.
Oh, you said you.
Yes.
Then it could be four feet if it's setback.
It would see through at the front yard.
Correct.
Okay.
And redefining front yard setback.
I was, I was looking at see-through, but, I mean.
Yes. And maybe, maybe there's a, a screen as an exception.
Even the see-through, six feet is too high.
I agree, I, I.
How do you define that, but?
I mean.
I think this is just fairly long.
Initially, I was pretty set on open fence in the front, in the five feet, but.
Yes.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, tell, tell the council, this is baby steps.
Well, I think they just wanted a recommendation to get that.
We'll recommend a few things, we can talk about it another time and this morning.
I, I don't think it's easy then soon enough, doing it, I'm just saying this, they can't solve all of this by just specifying numbers and codes.
Right.
That's why they took the neighborhood approach.
Right.
Right.
Is, he's right, some, some things are entirely appropriate. I like a lot of modern houses and maybe, you know, like Iklar Neighborhoods in the Bay Area, I love them, a lot of people hate them.
Right.
Yeah.
But they're, they're designed where you can't see anyone in the front yard.
Right.
But they have atriums and it's designed for private space.
Right, because you're, it's so open. Exactly.
Yeah.
And you have whole neighborhoods like that, so to come in and put a rule that didn't apply to that, doesn't make sense. On the other hand, I see that a lot of the neighborhoods right around here, you walk, I'd, open front yards are in law. When somebody walls it off, it kinda jumps out at you, uh, and that happens.
Right.
Right.
So I, I, I think to have a long-term solution, you probably have to have guidelines and some kind of designer review.
Mm-hmm.
And, and creative people will always do something that violates the code and looks good.
Right.
And one thing you wanna as a planner is, when you put down hard rules with everyone, you just crush people to good ideas.
Yep, right. Yep, that's true.
Right.
And we don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, it was interesting, I don't know how many years ago it was, but there was a property or house that had been remodeled almost to the top of Signal, North Signal. And they came in and part of their issue was, there are a lot of cars and people that go hiking. And, you know, and if they go in the winter at five o'clock, it's dark and people have their headlights on, so people are going in and they're turning in. So to me, depending on what's going on in a certain neighborhood or a street, and because of the character of the property and the way that their house was lower than the street by, you know, it was like this. You know, it was warranted for them to put a hedge. Now, once, there's, wasn't five feet from the edge, so I know when you do park there, you, there's nowhere to get out on the, the shotgun side of your car. But, you know, I think we need to, we need to look at that and be flexible.
Yeah, I agree.
And even on, the other day I was driving on, I think it was on Mallory, I was going on Mallory towards Aliso. And it wasn't dark yet, but I was almost getting ready to turn on my.
You were coming down Mallory toward Aliso.
Yeah, so heading south. And Mallory's a little bit higher at that one, I think at that point. But it's a T intersection, so there's a house right there and, you know, there's all their front windows. And they had planted a hedge and I went, I would've planted a hedge there too. Because you've got all the, you know, potentially cars coming with the headlights.
Right.
On the other hand, the house right to the left of it has a six foot solid wood fence.
I saw that too.
In the front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
So they got like a circle drive.
Yeah.
And then a six foot wo- wood fence.
Violation.
Seems to be.
But it.
Okay.
But I think he, he, to me, he gave me enough to get this back to council.
Okay.
We made some progress.
I'll come back.
And we should schedule another session or two at least on this.
Yeah, and hopefully the general plan gets moved into.
Well, I hope so, yeah, cause it really needs to all.
Oh, gosh, yes.
I'm holding my breath on the general plan.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, this is where we.
All right, let's.
Alternatively, we could recommend that they, that the town sergeant planning study or whatever it's called. Be funded to, to finish and that it address guidelines for fences and neighborhoods. I mean, to fill in the detail that we haven't, uh.
Well, they may be interested in the general plan.
Yeah, that'd be.
Okay. Let's move, let's move on to item five before we all fall asleep here.
Yeah, I'm starting to.
I have a couple of questions on, on director decisions. Since the fifth tree permit says remove a hazardous valley oak. I'm presuming that the two removals of coast live oaks were not hazardous, or they would have said so. And I was kinda curious, what was the rationale there?
I think that's a very imprecise term. The ones that were removed earlier, while they may not have been hazardous, had health issues, the hazardous trees.
Oh, okay.
Considered more imminent.
Okay.
We had some too, even where it's location, where heavy winds have fallen to the backyard, where you had flying areas and things where it said.
Sure, we had that at my house.
More heightened distance to come out right away.
So it was a, it was a distressed or dying tree.
But it is also an ongoing issue with defining that per.
Sure.
If you do not have to mitigate for taking out a hazardous tree and then replace it, you may be subject to having somebody wanna characterize your tree as hazardous. So we, we heard reports that have things every number, like the tree's leaning. Okay, well, every tree along here in front of this building.
Has a lean to it, yeah.
So this has been, I've actually talked to, to our first in person, first three.
Oh, good, yeah.
To try to, we need a little more justification and one recent one, even like, a tree can come out, but you have to replant it in the rear yard. So the one I think was clearly more called out as hazardous than the other two, but I don't sign off on trees that don't have some issue.
Okay. Good, yeah.
Some sort of a health issue.
Okay, yeah.
Just a quick comment on that, this is kind of a, a tree committee thing, but in regards to removing trees and defining what's wrong with the tree if it's hazardous. We had made the recommendation that, well, I've read numerous tree reports and sometimes it'll just say diseased. Okay, well, what, what is it? You can have, for, you know, less than a couple hundred bucks, you can actually, if you're not sure what it is and you can't document what it is. Sometimes you can document, you can identify and take photos and show the fruiting body or whatever. But you could have a test, and part of the reason you wanna do it is, first of all, you're validating what's wrong. But if you know what, if there is a problem like a disease that's causing the hazard or what have you, you may not wanna plant a certain species. Or species in that vicinity because you, now you know what the problem is.
Yeah, like.
Or you've, you've actually identified, you don't just say it's hazardous, you've identified what the causal agent, whether it's, you know, a disease, some sort of a pest and insect. Or sometimes it's just because the irrigation was bad and, you know, the tree rotted, you know.
One of those recently where the area had ever been graded differently because you had a mature oak that was declining. And we had pictures sent in, you know, standing water after it got the rains. Clearly, it wasn't always that way.
But because of the grades.
But they.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's declining with the drainage, it's, it's not going, it's not gonna keep its health, so something else changed.
Yeah, wow. Yeah.
Right.
In the meantime, so, but I totally agree that.
Yeah.
The tree, there's several things, I think, like defining what truly is hazardous.
Right, right.
Is important.
Right.
And I think still, even if it's hazardous, I'm more inclined to give some type of replacement anyway. Whether it goes in that spot or into a fund.
Is it, is it in your power to require that mitigation?
I mean, complete agreement with that.
And not when it's deemed hazardous.
Okay.
But the city could change that.
So people know the code word.
It, it, that's what I, it's a weakness, I mean, my own, well, your landscape already meant that, you were like, even the whole, the way the code kept rewritten for like oaks and sycamores are pretty much it.
Right.
Well, it applies to the whole genus, so I have a whole bunch of.
Porcas and planatus, yeah.
Trees that are protected, probably accidentally, because somebody wrote that wrong.
Right, I agree.
Sycamore, lemon plank trees are not native to the, this continent, but they're sycamore.
And they're protected. I agree with you, it needs to be identified, yeah.
Whereas other trees like the site like that tonight on Montgomery, the, the smaller cottages, I think there's some huge pecan trees and other things that were, that really old huge trees.
Right.
You can cut those down more.
Right, now, and our, our tree protection ordinance used to, until not too recent, too long, excuse me, I'm getting tired, too long ago. The trees were protected over, yeah, two thousand seven.
Yeah.
And I personally think that was a mistake and I think that needs to be revisited. And, and the invasive species need to be taken out. I totally agree with that. But, you know, you start seeing a decline in the overall urban forest because that and there's no mitigation and it's not a.
And I suspect you will, it will eventually become an issue after you lose enough.
Right.
We had enough, like, pepper trees by the school getting hacked back.
Yeah, they lost big oats.
They, they can take them out.
Right.
Without a permit. They're not a native tree, they're not protected. But so like, on the other hand, it felt, it's funny, that there's a whole series of oaks and sycamores that are not even native to North or South America that are protected because.
Because of the.
Related to protected trees.
Yeah, yeah, that's just a mistake.
And it's just like, I've written.
I, yeah, but I think whoever wrote it just didn't realize what they were.
But if the goal is to, what the purpose of the code was to get rid of or control certain invasive species, who live in, smarter to call those trees out.
Absolutely.
Than to pull back on what you protect, because.
Yep.
I think at some point, you'll lose significant mature trees.
They've already started to, yeah.
Like I said, that site tonight made me think if somebody else bought it to develop, I want to put nine homes there.
Yeah, they could essentially go and clear it.
They could clear a lot of those trees, maybe talking to us because they're...
Protected, exactly.
But they're clearly landmarks if you want.
Right. Yeah.
So when we talk about work program at the next joint meeting with council, we're going to... The tree ordinance is one of the items on that list.
By the way, I know at the budget meeting at six tonight, they decided to put off the joint meeting of the planning commission
Again?
with the city council.
Not on the twenty-fifth?
No.
Okay.
No.
The last one got postponed.
But nobody told us that it was on the twenty-fifth.
It was tentatively on the twenty-fifth.
The last one got postponed.
But the one on May fourteenth got postponed.
So where's the, yeah, but...
Oh, I did confirm.
Oh, you're right, there wasn't that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, I was, I was surprised that they postponed a meeting I didn't know about. Okay, item six. I'm fine with canceling July third. Doesn't look like we have anything right now, so I think you have a consensus on that.
Yeah.
Canceling the July third meeting, yeah. There was one of these topics over here, adaptive reuse. Could we maybe hit that on either June nineteenth or July seventeenth? I'm not even sure what it is.
For sure. Yeah, it's just the concept, is there already a going to council about has buildings that were built for one purpose changed to another? How you want, I mean, like you're getting...
Okay, it's kind of what it sounds like, but I don't know what the rules are in the code if there's anything that needs to be changed.
You make them.
Right. I think that's more the thing, a lot of cities, it's like where you're trying to target bigger cities, for instance, converting commercial or industrial buildings.
To residential.
And loft residential or something.
Into loft housing in these cities.
Sure, yeah.
Classic example. I mean, you're getting plenty of, do gas stations, becoming yoga studios.
Right.
Well, we've got all these, yeah, it's...
Yeah, right.
You're getting it, whether you realize it or not, it's here. You don't have as much with residential, you have residential getting converted to commercial probably more than you have around.
Well, we got a whole string of those things out on West Ohio Avenue, yeah.
But like Sain Center if the, you know, that's a residential building, it's commercial now. So that's the topic.
The Sain...
No, it was...
Oh, the Sain Center was, that was the funeral, was a funeral parlor, yeah.
When your store was residential, I mean, a lawn.
Yeah.
But lavender, you know, I mean, that's a classic.
Well, that's VMU at least, so...
But so that's the topic generally, and I know that went to council some time ago, so that would be easy to convert back on the seventh.
Okay. On the pending review, nine oh five Country Club Road, Central Service Building. Nine oh five Country Club.
That's the Olive Valley. I have to recuse myself, I'm going to be on that project.
It says OVIS, so I wasn't sure what it meant.
OI Valley Inn and Spa.
Oh, Inn and Spa, that's right. Used to be, I'm still thinking of it as Inn and Country Club. But that's, because I've been, I played golf back there in the sixties and forward.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, my father-in-law was a golf member there till he retired. Anything else that we want to ask about on item six? It looks like there should be plenty to do, but we're waiting on either applicants or city council for a lot of it.
I think some will be coming in, we're getting a lot of
Good, well...
A lot of conversation. Like, concept reviews, I think are going to be common.
Good. Well, we don't have a lot of time before the July, before the June nineteenth meeting. So there's a couple items, there's a couple items here.
You already have three, I think, for June nineteenth.
Yeah, so that should be fine.
What's coming back?
Oh, the Gables? Was that the development along Olive?
Yeah, this is the one that got canceled a couple months ago.
Okay. Item seven. Reports on city council. She's ready.
City council meeting.
May twenty-eighth.
Representative from the electric company showed up and gave a report about how they are updating their equipment and taking precautions for fire and safety. There's been a slight increase in our population of thirty-seven people.
Still...
The council passed an ordinance allowing for permitting of manufacturing, micro-business and distribution of cannabis. We're still debating on the particulars of the regulations and there will be a general election ballot item about levying tax on cannabis. And the there was an item to have a children's memorial area outside of city hall and the idea of the city partnering up with different organizations that had an interest in improving a part of, say, our landscape that doesn't get too much attention in order to serve both them and the city was generally held to be a good idea, so they've given this group the go-ahead to look into what they would do to develop a children's memorial for children who have died in the city and take one area of landscape area outside of city hall here and do something next to it, so. Next to the pickleball court. But we'll see. And then, let's see, there was discussion about the updates to Title IX. It was determined that somebody appeals a decision. The city has to at least schedule a date within fifteen days of receiving request.
Yeah, not hold the hearing, but just schedule the hearing.
And then the hearing had to be held within ninety days. I think if it weren't, then the fee would be waived to be upon. They denied, they decided not to... How do I say this? If you have a violation, you can be arrested, and they decided to keep that. And...
Yeah, there was some discussion about whether or not the...
Five dollars a week if you don't have house numbers.
Oh, okay.
Apparently, the building official, I guess can't arrest you, but can tell a police chief to arrest you.
Yes.
And so
Last piece, last piece of story.
Appeals board thought that that was egregious, so they should get rid of that, that that was not the right way to do it, but the city council decided they wanted to have the right to arrest somebody if they didn't comply.
But the building official still can't arrest you?
Yes.
He has to ask the sheriff to do it.
Sheriff can arrest you. If you, I don't know what was, what kind of like violation would cause you to be arrested, but...
Almost anything, almost anything in the municipal code could be a violation.
And on that note, I think I'm finished.
Yeah, good.
Thanks, Bobby.
Yes, thank you. MAC meeting?
Oh, MAC meeting, let's see, that's the June fifteenth, June fifi- no, wait, May twentieth.
May twentieth.
Was on Creek Road. And so it was a pretty packed room. I had some nice notes that I had a lot of detail, I couldn't find them, so, just from memory. So the county, some county staff were there from their transportation or traffic division.
Yeah, somebody from Steve Bennett's staff is always there.
He's on the board, Steve Hoffman was on the board. These were staff people from the county who actually, they explained how, what data they collect, how the how the data that they see is used to, for decreasing traffic speed or and/or installing stop signs. And that was pretty interesting, I, but I'm sorry, I can't remember the detail exactly. But there are certain things that happen, if it's, like if there's a crash and it's not reported, it doesn't get into their data system at all. So, so they probably miss some things that way. So the residents were looking for, so they were basically saying they didn't have the information to decrease the speed further. It ranges between forty and forty-five, depending on which section of Creek Road.
Yeah, the problem is nobody pays any attention to the speed limit.
Yeah, and it's mostly locals.
And Google Maps and other navigation systems still steer you to Creek Road.
Yes.
Either northbound or southbound.
Yeah. But the speeding issue, is it Captain Freihoff or?
Captain Freihoff. Freihoff.
Freihoff.
He is a captain.
He is Captain Freihoff.
Charlie Ball, captain.
I think he was the one who, and I spoke to council as well, that I think he's saying eighty-five or ninety percent of these people they stop for speeding are locals.
Yes.
It's really a local problem, it's not, it's not the tourists. Tourists, the tourists are going really slow because they don't know where they're going.
Yeah.
I would have thought, speaking of Creek Road, when we were talking about how busy it is on South Montgomery Street, which it is. I wondered if there was a sign, I mean, maybe it wouldn't do any good, on South Ventura Street that pointed to downtown Ojai, so people wouldn't go as far as South Montgomery Street if they were coming in town. At least there's a traffic light.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Well, there's not a traffic light.
The road's split. The lights at...
No, there's, the lights at Signal Street, no.
That's a good idea.
But I don't know, if maybe that would just give a little bit of relief.
So the residents were asking for more consideration, they would like to have three stop signs put along Creek Road, you know, the main streets coming in, and to reduce traffic speed. And Supervisor Bennett was there, and he actually stood up at the end of the meeting and he said apparently there's, there have been crashes that have occurred, but they're outside the radius of what the department looks at, the transportation department, whatever, looks at for their data collection. So Supervisor Bennett did say, could we please expand our area that, where we look to see how many crashes there are or whatever in terms of justification for stop signs. And so they're going to do that, and I think that was the number one item on the request list from the residents was to install three stop signs. They felt that would...
That street's always been treacherous.
There are some, there are some relatively major streets that dead-end into Creek Road and that would be good places to put stop signs.
Yeah, seems like it's kind of a... But, you know, there needs to be enough justification for it, so hopefully maybe with, they can expand their area of investigation, that maybe that will modify what they find.
Their numbers will change.
Yes, so it's a very well attended meeting.
Okay, and then there's May twenty-second, Building Appeals Board, which I took for...
Thank you for going.
I went, and I confess, I left my notes at home. If you, Sherry, would put that on a report June nineteenth, I will do that. The one thing I can report is that at the beginning of the meeting, I went and told the chair, Mr. Ulrich, I said, I am here in lieu of Commissioner Lottis tonight because you were on the agenda as the liaison. And they got to the, next to the last item in the agenda, and he wrapped the gavel and said, we're adjourned.
Well, they've done that when I've been there too, they've called, asked for a report.
They weren't interested in hearing what the planning commission was doing.
I just took notes and...
Yeah. But I will, I will retrieve my notes and report because I can't do it from memory.
I did do a very good job.
Ten thirty.
That's the, that's the last item on our agenda. Does anybody else have anything they want to do besides go home? Great. Ten thirty, we're adjourned.